The Alabama State Board of Education Elementary Secondary Education Work Session is now called to order. The first item on the agenda, Updates from State Superintendent. Dr. Mackey.
Okay, thank you very much. I, so we have two big updates. We're going to get to those in just a minute. But first, let me make a couple of announcements. We want to recognize some folks. We've got our Troy team, which has been faithful to Troy now. You know, I kept, I'm recognizing them again. But they are fairly close and they're very committed to it, have a lot of teacher programs. And so they're going to have somebody here, they said, pretty much every meeting to stay in direct contact with the board. We appreciate that. And the Dean you've met, but we do have a new Dean with us today, too. So Dean Kimberly White from our alma mater, Jacksonville. Put her on the spot and ask you to come to one of our Chairs of Honor, just to get to know the board, say a little bit about yourself. So come up front to the seats there, if you will. And I know Dean White, I had a great conversation with her via Zoom a few weeks ago after she came. She comes to us from Richmond, Virginia, but has roots in Georgia. I think all of her previous jobs, I think, have been at HBCUs, which is great experience for us, too, to have. And we're just thrilled to have her in Alabama and thrilled to have her at Jacksonville State. So Dean White.
Well, thank you Superintendent Mackey. And I am used to being put on the spot with the board members over the last few months, rolling right into fire with presentations. But thank you for giving me the opportunity to introduce myself. I am Kimberly Gators White and of course, the Dean for Jacksonville State University, our College of Education and Professional Studies. We have a new name, kind of a revision back to an older name, but we're College of Education Professional Studies. Very, very proud of that. I do come from Albany, Georgia. Somebody's going to say, "Albany." But I am a.
I'm a Georgian. I know where Albany is.
Great. I am from Albany, Georgia. And I did get my start in higher education at Albany State University. I was their Special Education, English, Educational Leadership. And I left as the Dean for the College of Education after 16 years of higher ed there. I went to Ferrum College, and Ferrum is a small liberal arts college, near Roanoke, Virginia. And I was Dean of Academic Affairs there. I remarried and my husband and I moved to the Richmond area. And I became Dean of the College of Education at Virginia Union University. And unfortunately, due to COVID, my father passed away. I wanted to come back home. And so I have relocated back here and am again happy to be at Jacksonville State University.
We're glad to have you and have all good things about you. I know you've been able to meet Dr. McCarty.
Yes.
We're not going to throw too much on you right now, but are there any not deeply burning questions from the board that you would want to ask?
I'll go for the deeply.
I wanted to come back, so. Now, we're certainly thrilled to have you. I don't know if you've met Dean Palmer, but I hope y'all get to meet. When I was at Jacksonville State, there was a big Jacksonville-Troy rivalry, but I think nobody remembers it anymore either, so that's okay.
I remember the bands.
You remember it. I love the bands.
Assistant Superintendent in Troy, and the big deal was when the bands met. The whole town, Jacksonville and Troy, it was a big deal. Y'all are fantastic. Jacksonville State is great.
Yes. Marching Southerners have 498 strong this year. And I have heard that challenge, and I think that Jacksonville State University will also have a representative here at East Albany.
Rivalry, rivalry. You've met Dr. McCarty. I don't know if you've met Dr. Tanya Chestnut before. They know the JSU alum.
Oh, yes.
So you've got a lot of, lot of close allies here. We're thrilled to have you.
And I can just say that everyone at the Board of Education has been just super nice. Dr. Meyer and Dr. Kozlowski have just been super supportive, just kind of introduced me to the area. Dr. McCarty, keeping us up to date on everything. So I am just very, very supported by all of you. And again, thank you.
Well, we're here to support you.
Thank you. Great to have you. I don't think we have any other special guests that we wouldn't, you know, normally be here with us. We are going to have two presentations this morning. Some of you, I won't name all names, but at least three board members have told me you need to leave early this afternoon. And so we're going to try to push through. We'll stay as late as we need to, obviously, but if folks need to leave. We really, these two presentations won't take too long. Then I'll let you all decide if you want to. At that point, I think we'll be ready to go ahead and do, start the board member questions. And then we do have the Workforce Council coming. They're coming about 1:30. And so maybe we'll, if we're not to a stopping point when they get here, or if we're not finished with other business, we might want to stop, or if we're obviously right in the middle of something, I'm sure they'll understand that. We might want to finish up the conversation. But we have a computer science update. As I mentioned, Don Morrison is going to talk about all the activities going on in computer science. Y'all know that that's hit us in a weird place again with the pandemic, because we had worked on Alabama's great computer science law. And we're pushing computer science out to every high school, and then middle school, and then elementary school. But obviously, last year was a very difficult year. We still did correctly expand programs last year, but it was, it was difficult in some circumstances. So she can talk a little bit about that and where we are, though. And then after that, in that same theme of computer science, we have asked the Alabama Supercomputer Authority to come and talk about what they're doing at the Special Operations Center in Huntsville. I know Dr. Reynolds went, because they sent me a picture from visiting up there. And they, even though that's in his district, they would like for all of us to go. I've never been able to go, but have committed after the first of the year to get up there. But attacks, it's mixed the news, not just in schools, but as y'all know, cyber attacks are hitting businesses, private and public, hard. And we've had about five schools hit in the last 20 months, but three of them in one month. And y'all remember that summer, it was very tough. So we, we actually, even though the internet doesn't come through the department, we changed some of our protocols to help districts kind of put a response team together when they get their attack. But more importantly, working the legislature to get some special things put in place with the Supercomputer Authority to, um, I won't, I won't even try to do the presentation, but on both the infrastructure and the technology piece, but also the, the training piece. So they'll talk about that a little bit and what, what we're doing to support our districts through for security. So with.
Dr. Mackey, since you mentioned my name, I will tell you, that is a very interesting tour. And it's humbling to see the technology and the intellectual capacity that that group has. And I sat there and they explained stuff, and I didn't want to admit them that I, I thought I had a computer background. But those people are fantastic. And the controls that they do to protect the integrity of our data is amazing. And we're fortunate in Alabama to have them. And we're even more fortunate to have them in Huntsville.
I agree with you. And so Deborah Wallace leads that work. Deborah, I'm going to turn it over to you and ask you if you've come up front. I'm sorry, I jumped, I jumped. I'm starting to do computer science. Dr. Reynolds, throw me off. But you're right, they do. Okay, where's Don Morrison? Now, you were right there. I was, I was missing you. I thought I might have lost you. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Morrison.
And just a quick video before that, Dr. Mackey. That Amstad video?
Oh, yeah.
You want, can you hold on one second?
Absolutely.
Amstad did two videos. I told them we could only show one during the board meeting. And so the other one goes more into like their numbers and all the students they're serving. So if y'all can delay for a minute, we'll show the video. Let's key it up and go. It's a great video. It's a little longer than the other one. Great. A lot of good work going on. But now for computer science. We'll pull yours up. All yours.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Mackey. Good morning to each and every one of you.
Good morning.
It is indeed a pleasure to provide you all a computer science update. I was not in front of you last year for an update, but I would like to reflect this a little bit on what occurred in 2020. I will share with you that all of our approved providers, obviously, in the, you know, heat of the pandemic, they were able to pivot pretty quickly in some instances to move all of their training for our teachers, our high-quality professional learning for our teachers to online. So last summer, most of our professional development did, it did take place, but it was online. But we were so pleased this summer to be able to bring back a little bit of in-person training. So we resumed, you know, in-person. We're also providing hybrid approaches as well for those that are, you know, still a little bit uncomfortable about meeting in person. And so just wanted to catch you up to speed on what happened summer of 2020, before we move into what has happened since then. I will share with you, as we move to the next slide, that as Dr. Mackey alluded to in his superintendent's report, that it is indeed official. Alabama is indeed non-for-non on all of the code.org policy recommendations. That includes everything from us having in place a state plan. Some of our board members will recall that in December of 2019, Dr. Mackey and I presented before you our strategic plan for computer science based on the governor's Computer Science Advisory Committee at the time. And we were able to then take that plan and add an actual timeline to it. And that was actually the one thing that was kind of holding us back in terms of being able to meet non-for-non. So we are very happy that that was able to take place. Additionally, in 2018, we, you all passed standards for computer science and digital literacy. That also included us being able to have funding. We're very fortunate to have an ETF line item for computer science education, as well as pre-service incentives, a dedicated CS position. We were able to hire Amanda Dykes as a result of that legislation that was passed in 2019. And then also the fact that we all require all of our secondary schools to offer a high-quality computer science. And then finally, making CS count for either a math or a science credit got us to non-for-non. So again, we are one of six states across the country that is able to hold that banner at this time. And I do encourage, I'm sorry, the techie in me, but if you want to continue to track our CS data policy efforts, I do encourage you to, yes, ma'am, scan the QR code that is found in the upper right-hand corner of that particular slide. I'm sorry, I had to put one in there. Actually, there's two you will find. As you continue to move on, I will tell, share with you that the data that you see in front of you for the next couple of slides. Next slide, please. The, the data that you see in front of you is self-reported data from our LEAs. Again, that is pursuant to our Computer Science Education Act, Act 2019-389, where the LEAs are required to report. So again, this data is pretty current. You will find that once we go live with the actual computer science expansion data report that is expected to be reported on or by December 1, that there will be a little bit of fluctuation. We are still waiting, just to be transparent about, for, we're waiting for three more LEAs and one charter to report before we move everything to Tableau and make it live. So we hope to do that. Certainly within the next week, but definitely before Thanksgiving. But to date, I hope that you will be pleased with our movement at this time. You will see that there was a 96% increase in computer science student enrollment from last academic year to our, to the current academic year. And that is tremendous. Additionally, this current academic year, we have 431 students enrolled in a dual enrollment course. We currently recognize about 18 computer science courses at our post-secondary institutions that will count as high-quality computer science courses. So again, we continue to, you know, trend upward with regard to student enrollment. And certainly, this is something for us to celebrate. As we move on to the next slide. I will share with you that at this time, our CS teachers, there is a, a uptick in terms of how many we continue to train. And last, last year, there were 207 that we trained. And as we make that comparison, you will see that in total, we have been able to train upwards of 648 Alabama computer science teachers at this time. And those teachers, I will tell you that they are all still working towards submitting their applications specifically for full certification in computer science or a computer science course-specific permit. But you do see that even between last summer and this summer, the difference in terms of how many we have trained, and again, that number also continues to increase. And we are very, very pleased with that number. I will tell you that professional development is paramount in this area. You know, this is a new content area, if you will, for most of our teachers. They do not come to us with the, you know, background nor the comfort level. And that's also key as well in order to provide high-quality instruction in the classroom. And so the providers that have been identified to deliver professional learning, they're doing a tremendous job. And the training, as well as ensuring that the confidence level of our teachers is also increasing at the same time. Next slide. Here you will see that we have 76% of our middle and high schools are meeting the implementation requirements. Again, that's, this is a tremendous number, something for us to celebrate as well. And it is also with this current academic year, our middle schools were required to implement a high-quality computer science course. You will see that we have currently 202 high schools that have met the requirement to date, 220 middle schools, 90 middle and/or high schools, and then right now, we have 164 not meeting the requirement. And I want to explain exactly what that number really means. So we know that we have some schools that have multiple configurations, whether it be K-12, 612, 712. And so in some instances, they may be meeting it for middle school if they, you know, include one of those configurations I just listed, or they may not be, and they may not be meeting it at the, you know, for their high school requirement. So again, that is what the 164 actually reflects. Next slide.
Don, excuse me, what is the biggest burden or obstacle for them to offer computer science in the high school?
Um, I will, just to be, I guess, frank, if you will.
Yes.
As we're hearing from our district leaders and some of our school-level leaders as well, the biggest, I guess, struggle is finding a teacher and also using their unit in that way. But many times, I will, you know, redirect, redirect them in terms of how they can creatively, you know, use what they have. Of course, you know, some are, you know, still indicating that this is an unfunded mandate. But as we can see with the number of schools that are participating, most of our schools are making it work.
And can they use TEAMS Act money to supplement their salaries?
Absolutely, yes. Computer science, as well as engineering, was also included, along with math and science, and the, in terms of the certifications that are identified to meet TEAMS requirements. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Let me jump in just on that.
Yes.
Everything she said is exactly correct. But there is still some confusion out there, because to get enough computer science teachers, which is, Ms. Morrison has said, we really don't have. But there's no way we couldn't have gotten enough certified so, this quickly. So we've done this permits, a course-specific permit. So, so we're TEAMS, and this is where one of the confusion pieces comes in, and you didn't ask this, Dr. McCarty, but for the benefit of people listening. If I have a, well, I do. I have a science teaching certificate. If they were to ask me to teach a computer science class, I'm not sure why anybody would do that, but. And I, and I passed the permit piece, then I could teach the computer science with my science certificate. And if I'm teaching sci, you know, normally I'm teaching science courses, but I have a computer science course, then I can qualify for a TEAMS contract. But let's say I was an English teacher and I'm teaching one computer science course. Well, then I don't qualify for the TEAMS contract, because TEAMS is for math-science teachers. Now, we did get the legislature to expand it and include anybody with a computer science certificate. If they have a true computer science certificate, no question, they qualify. If they have a math certificate or a science certificate, they qualify. But then also, and we actually clarified this in a memo just a couple of weeks ago, that if they have that math or science certificate and they're teaching computer science, they still qualify. Because the way, it's a little bit, we're actually, I mean, we, we're not going beyond the law. We have the authority to do that. But we're, it's an implementation period. We've given them until, the TEAMS law doesn't clearly say that. So what we've said is if you're in that position, you have a math or science certificate, and you're teaching computer science courses, then, I mean, you're mostly, they're teaching math and science anyway, but they're teaching these computer science courses. We'll give them till the summer of 2023 to pass their computer science praxis or whatever the requirement is they need to do. Because otherwise, what we, what it looked like might happen was at Christmas, we were going to have all these great computer science classes dropped, because math teachers would say, well, you know, if it's going to be $20,000 difference in my paycheck, I just want to teach all algebra and not worry about computer science. Well, we've made so much gains. And this lady right here has pushed the gains. She has really shouldered the burden for all of this heavy work in a short amount of time. And we didn't take anything else off of her, by the way. She still does other things besides computer science. But, but pushing that forward, we just, we didn't want to lose momentum. So we, we extended that grace period, which had already, we'd given them this fall, but we extended it through summer of '23. So that helps, that made a lot of people breathe a sigh of relief. Some of you heard from, from these teachers who were told that they had to pass the praxis by December 1. And they were trying to study for the praxis and also teach their classes. And it's just, it's just too much, too much pressure on our teachers. So that's why we extended that window. But that's just a little more detail about that. But I certainly can. We really hope we'll get a lot more young people going into computer science certification. But it's like, like math and science, if you can do the work to be a computer science certified teacher, you likely are going to get picked off by private industry, because they are after those young people.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Thank you for the question. And, but we are pushing it forward. And just reiterate words already said, but as Ms. Morrison said, schools, you know, like, now, be careful what I say, but leadership matters.
Yes.
And most schools have figured it out.
Yes.
And they understand that their students need these skills in the next decade, and we're going to find a way to do it. The ones that haven't figured it out yet, we're working with them, not, not bludgeoning them, but working with them to figure it out.
Yes. Thank you so much, Dr. Mackey, for adding that. And, you know, additionally, without the, the, you know, additional timeline added for our teachers to pass that computer science praxis, you know, all I could, I went into panic mode, and I certainly thank Jessica for, for being there to, to listen to my concerns. I, I just felt like, you know, our whole efforts were about to fall apart if we had not, you know, made some concessions for those individuals that were studying really hard to pass the computer science praxis. So again, thank you to Dr. Mackey and to the rest of the team for being responsive in that way, particularly to the teachers. But you will see that on this current slide here, we have identified several high-quality professional learning providers that have been approved by the State Department of Education, all the way, starting at the top, A-plus college-ready. This indicates the number of teachers that they have trained during the summer in total to this date. We also have ECS for Alabama, which is run out of Tuskegee University. CS Makers also run out of Tuskegee University. We have PACTS, which is actually our federal EIR grant that we were awarded back in 2019. That is a specific research study for rural schools and expanding efforts in our, you know, communities with rural locale codes. We also have Project Lead the Way is still on the map as an approved provider as well. Again, you will see some of our providers, such as Project Lead the Way or even Microsoft Teals, they're not listed here. But the reason they're up there is because several of our school districts were already implementing, if you will, some of our high-quality computer science courses. And we did not want to yank the rug from underneath their efforts. And so we wanted them to be able to continue with those specific providers, because they are high-quality and they do meet the tenets of the legislation as well. And then finally, we close out with our College Board APSI training, which could be taken in-state or out-of-state. They're not, it's wherever, they will, many times, our teachers will jump into training that best fits their, you know, summer schedules. Next slide. Here you will see that our students continue to progress, and specifically in our AP Computer Science courses. We do have two courses on the books, APCSA, which is a pure Java programming course. And then we have APCS Principles, which is the newest computer science course. It's actually probably been around maybe five years now. But it is a, a more broader course. It doesn't necessarily focus on a specific programming language, per se. You will notice that between last year and this year, in terms of the number of students taking an AP exam, either in Principles or A, just a very, very, very slight decline. And again, we were in the middle of a pandemic, so we did lose some students along the way. But you will still see that, what, 56% of our students were still able to pass that exam with a score of 3, 4, or 5. Next slide. This particular, the next two slides have everything to do with the data that was reported to code.org. At the time, the slides were due, the reports, and then the data from the national report was actually embargoed. And so that's why you have that watermark there. But you will still see that for 2021, and that is the number that Dr. Mackey actually shared with you in the. that Dr. Mackey actually shared with you, uh, in the, uh, board meeting, that we have 82% of our high schools, um, are providing, um, computer science. And then if you move, uh, along the, um, graph there, access by geography, again, 81%, this is tremendous, um, as we even compare ourselves across the country for computer science to be in 198 of our rural schools. Um, across the country, I, I will tell you that, um, rural schools and, um, underrepresented, traditionally underrepresented students continue to be, um, you know, a, um, big barrier, if you will. Um, and so, like I said earlier, we continue to make, um, you know, great strides and expanding our efforts, um, beyond, like I always like to call it, the I-65 corridor, to those points east and west. And, um, and then finally, you will see the, the chart there, access by our free and reduced lunch in the school. Again, um, we are making tremendous, um, you know, strides. But, um, you will see that while 90% of our Alabama's, um, high school students attend a high school that offers computer science, only 4.5% of them are actually enrolled, okay? So again, um, that's where the work, uh, continues for us. Uh, we celebrate, uh, everything up to this point, but we also recognize we still have work to, to do with regard to participation rate. And, um, also, um, as we go even on to the next slide, Charles.
Many of the rural children that we have in the neighborhood.
You're, you're absolutely right. Um, uh, the board member, um, just indicated that, you know, again, many of our students don't have access to internet at home. And definitely, we, uh, all know and recognize that the pandemic certainly brought many of that, uh, you know, whole digital divide to light. And so I, I'm sure that, um, you know, as, um, we continue to work with increasing broadband issues in our state, um, we will be able to remedy, you know, um, some of that. So, um, as we take a look at, um, who's enrolling in computer science, you will see, um, the makeup here by, um, you know, socioeconomic status as well as by, um, race and ethnicity. And, uh, again, um, we hang our hat on some of these numbers, but yet we also recognize that we still have some work to do with regard to participation. And then, um, as we even go on to the next slide, Charles. Well, I, some, we missed the gender slide. Was it?
I saw the number 38% of females.
Yes, yes.
The bottom is at the bottom.
It was at the very bottom.
Yes, can we go back? I'm sorry, I wanna also.
There it is.
Thank you. It is important, thank you, that, uh, we also mentioned that we only have 38% of our females that are also enrolling. So, uh, again, that, um, actually mirrors what, uh, is occurring in industry. Uh, we know that, uh, females are still underrepresented in, uh, the STEM field. So we also recognize that it's also an area that we continue to improve. And I, I will tell you that, um, with regard to the research study that we are participating in, there is a specific program called, um, it's called C4C, but it means counselors for computing. Uh, we are also, uh, providing professional development to our counselors. While we are, um, only providing it right now to those that are involved in the research study, we will be expanding that to all of our school districts uh, because they will find that very beneficial. And their recruiting efforts to, um, you know, enroll students of, um, you know, non-traditional, um, that are not, you know, traditionally represented. Uh, and hopefully, um, you know, there's some specific strategies that those, that we can help equip those, uh, counselors with, um, and that, uh, that will help hopefully to address that area.
Excuse me, you said C for?
C for C.
Oh, C for C, okay.
Yes, it is actually a, um, a national program, um, that is, um, that was formed by the National Center for Women and Information Technology. Um, you've seen NC-WIT many times because we've recognized the young ladies generally around May, um, that have, um, been awarded. Um, and even, we've had one national winner and several honorable mentions.
Great.
Um, you've seen those, um, resolutions, resolutions in front of you. But, um, they're the, uh, provider of that particular professional development.
One quick question. Are our career counselors, um, and workforce counselors that we have regionally, are they sort of working hand-in-hand with us in putting out the numbers of the jobs that really are really gonna prepare students to move into those roles, those job roles with computer science education? Are we sharing this data with those regional coaches?
With our, our career coaches?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, yes. Uh, we've got some really great career coaches, um, at the local level. And, um, I do know that, um, they do share, um, where the jobs are by workforce region with, with the students that they service.
But it just, it's a shame that there's only 4.5% participation rate. And I was just sitting here thinking there's, I read an article not too long ago, but I, there's really not, there aren't very many careers right now that are out there that you don't need this.
Exactly.
Um, and for us to be leading the country in the efforts we're making as a state that have such a low participation rate just kind of surprises me.
For sure. And again, um, some of that also goes back to, um, some of the comments that Dr. Mackey alluded to earlier about, um, you know, leadership. Um, we still have some more work to do with regard to even informing our, um, our leaders, you know, what computer science actually is. Um, I mean, I had to clutch my pearls a couple of weeks ago uh, in a conversation with, uh, one of our, um, building-level administrators in terms of what his interpretation of computer science was and what it actually really is. So, uh, we understand that we do have some more work to do. And, uh, we hope that, uh, through scripts training, which is available through, um, CS for All, that we'll be bringing to the districts, that will also help, uh, enlighten them, um, as well.
And then to segue off that, are the parents being told and understanding what it entails? I mean, if the building, uh, level people don't understand, I hate to think what the parents are understanding. So that's critical as well. So is that in the plan, plan of action?
Uh, we can definitely, um, add that to the plan of action. And, um, I, I will tell you that, um, it's interesting you, um, you said that only because, um, it's also time for us to revise our strategic plan for, uh, computer science. And, um, myself and another teammate, um, actually two teammates just returned from the code.org, um, CSPD, uh, week as well. And, um, it was suggested that, um, we perhaps add a student voice and a parent voice to that, uh, committee makeup. So, um, yes, you're right on target.
Okay.
I think we are ready for the.
This one?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Charles. Appreciate your help today. So I, I want to close with the second to the last slide here. Um, and garnering, uh, garnering your support and, uh, you know, help with the promotion of the Alabama Governor's App Challenge. Um, we kicked it off, um, at the end of, um, August. And our TEAMS have until January the 14th to submit their apps. Um, and so all of this is, um, you know, broken down by, uh, state school board district. So we wanna make sure that all of our school board districts are represented this year. And I am, you know, happy to provide, um, you all support, um, a report in terms of, you know, where we may not have submissions just yet, if anybody is interested.
We might not know.
Yes. So, um, additionally, for those techies that are in the room, if you would like more information about the Governor's App Challenge, please be sure to scan the QR code that you do see there. And then, um, finally, please make sure, I saw that, uh, Sandy had it in her video. Please make sure that you join us the week of, uh, December the 6th through the 12th for Computer Science Education Week. This year's theme is hashtag CS Everywhere, which indicates, um, you know, to the, um, which just indicates the fact that, um, going back to some of the comments that even, uh, Ms. West, you just made, that this is touching the lives of our students in every way possible. Um, and so we want to continue and promote that theme when we kick off our code on December the 6th and run it all the way through the 12th or whenever it is convenient for our schools to participate. Um, but, um, it, it is important that we continue to move forward with our computer science implementation efforts uh, if we intend for our students to be able to succeed and, uh, interact with existing as well as emerging technologies. So, um, that is all that I have for you at this time for, um, this particular report. And, uh, just for the general public, if you have general questions, um, please be sure to email us at csforalabama@alsd.edu. Any questions from the board members?
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
She does great work.
And I don't do this by myself. If I could just take a, a moment to recognize the people that are also down in the trenches with me. Uh, certainly, uh, the whole teacher certification team, I mean, they're a big part of this. Uh, our rock star teacher certification expert, computer scientist, Dr. Kelly Stanton, over there sitting beside, uh, Nick. Ms. Amanda Dykes, who is our, uh, computer science specialist, um, that was hired as a result of the legislature. Admin support is provided by, uh, Ms. Rhonda Hannah is with us. I have also on my team Nikita Dean, um, who, um, manages the information technology cluster, which also includes computer science, as well as Ben Shireman over here to my right, um, who also manages our STEM cluster. And then, um, Amsty also has a, um, computer science specialist as well, uh, and the likes of Mandy, what's Mandy? Mandy Kramer. So again, it, it takes the whole department to, to make this effort work. So thank you all again.
Thank you.
The harder we run, the further behind we get.
Yes, yes.
Dr. Mackey, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm supportive of all of this. I'm so proud of Alabama for, for doing well in the area of computer science and proud of the TEAMS program. But I received a call last week from a superintendent who was upset because she has three math teachers who also drive buses, who are making more money than the principal. And the principal's not happy about that. She also.
She drives a bus.
She also had, um, already had one principal resign and go to another county because he could make more money teaching math. Um, so we have to do something, we don't wanna lose our principals. We want everyone to do well. So what is the answer to the local boards to give us principal supplements?
I mean.
What do we do here?
Very hard to say. I, I mean, the. The simple answer is they need to raise their principal salaries, I think. I mean, I, I, the TEAMS, so a TEAMS teacher that has 30 years' experience, a doctorate, is teaching in a high-needs school and is also national board certified, can make up to $105,000. And, and I just cannot imagine we have principals out there that aren't making that, to be honest with you. Um, because that's hard work. Uh, average principals make, it's, I think, about $1.12. And so, but obviously, average is average, so some are a little way below that. But I don't know another way around it. The average TEAMS teacher is making, uh, I think, 82. Most of them are not making $105 because they don't have all those things stacked together. Um, and I've heard from some superintendents, some of them pay their principals in the low 80s. But I don't know, uh, I mean, I don't know a way around that. It's kind of, because, I don't wanna get, I mean, I'll, I'll be frank, Ms. Morrison be frank, I'll be frank too. I mean, it is market economics. I mean, and, and I, that's the truth. If I were a principal working, the hours principals have to work. And, and I could make more money teaching science on a nine-month contract. It would be tempting to do that. You know, and I mean, but here's the reverse of that. When we, when legislators called us in and wanted to discuss TEAMS, that was their point. They wanted people, they wanted people to leave central offices. We lost people here. We had department employees that left us. Uh, we lost regional math and science specialists. Uh, we, uh, universities, lost some university people because they could make more going back to high school. So to that end, it has done exactly what the legislature designed it to do. The problem, of course, is that that's, that if, if they don't want those people to change jobs, then it creates salary inflation, basically. And I don't know, we have talked to some superintendents about that. Um, and in fact, that is the number one complaint about TEAMS, is that they have teachers making as much as or more than what they wanna pay their principals. But, uh, I don't, I don't know what to say other than it's kind of market-driven. Like that's, if you think that person's a great principal and you want to be a principal, you, you know, when the principal, when the Teacher Accountability Act came into place in 99, which is the contract principal law, has nothing to do with teachers or accountability, but that's the, what they called it. Um, but the idea was that, the whole idea was principals were given up tenure and they could negotiate for unlimited salary and benefit packages. And, you know, in many places, I know that's, those are hard negotiations, but we also have principals that are negotiating pretty hard. So I don't know, I'm starting, I'll start talking in circles. Now, I don't know another way around that. I mean, uh, if you want somebody to be in a position, you've gotta negotiate with them to get there. So I don't know my answer to the question.
So it would have to come out of the local law. There would be a local decision and that raise would have to come out of the.
But some of them don't have that local support.
So we don't, we don't pay, well, here's what we do for principals, you do. So it's in the foundation program that for, uh, every school gets a principal unit. So that's aside from their teacher units. And the legislature provides through the foundation program that we, of course, forward on, they provide a, um, it's an average teacher's pay times a 12-month contract. So they do an extension of that. Now, so that's what they get for, that's, I think that's a high school. It's a little different thing for elementary school, it's an 11-month contract. A unit school's 12 months, and I forget what middle schools are. But in most schools, that's not enough to actually pay the principal. And the reasons, there are a couple of reasons. One is because the, uh, most principals have the experience and degrees that average teacher pay times 12 months doesn't touch what they're, what the districts are paying them. And then it goes down to market economics again. I mean, principal salaries are going up. I mean, we have, y'all know, we have football coaches now making over $120 in high school. And so, and, um, there is a, you know, I mean, there used to be an accreditation standard that the principal had to make $1 more than the highest-paid, uh, teacher in the school. That is not an accreditation standard anymore. That was never a state law. That was under accreditation. That has gone away. The, so, so that's not a requirement anymore. So that has led to salary inflation for some teachers in, in key, key spots, let's say.
Dr. Mackey, I would comment, your comment about it's market-driven is germane. It's, we live in a market-driven society. We believe in a democratic, market-driven economy. For example, school bus drivers are a premium. There are more people that wanna be principals than there are wanna be school bus drivers. I drive around my system and there are signs, please drive a bus. We'll train you, we'll do everything. I've tried to get Carol to be a school bus driver, but she won't. The reality is, it is, it is a market-driven. And those of you who know my wife, she's not gonna do that. But I've had people, and we talked about that in the medical field. I've had people call me and offer me $6,000 a week to work 36 hours to be a nurse. I'm not gonna do that. But that's the market that we have. School, school bus drivers, teach nurses and surgeons. And in my area, computer science people and, or if you've got a security clearance to get a government job. Those are market-driven realities. And when, when we advise our students and our colleagues about how to make more money, look at the market, look at what people are paying for. I mean, I don't know if your system has enough school bus drivers, apparently not. This teacher is working an arduous, like, getting up early in the morning, driving a bus, driving late. bus, driving late. That's not an easy thing to do. And you can't compare apples to apples if she's driving the bus in the highest priority hiring I think could exist in Alabama. If that's not true, it seems to be true in our area, that Athens City has a bus driving around saying, we hire bus drivers. In Athens City, with a sign on the bus.
We have them here in Montgomery, too. And it, and it is, so that supplement is a local thing. Montgomery County is a prime example because I live here and we've dealt with this for years, that, but I've watched Montgomery County lose high school principals to other school systems. And in one case, I won't name the system, but we had a very good principal who left and took an assistant principal's job in another school district in the Tennessee Valley and got a pay raise. He was a high school principal and got a pay raise to go up there and become an assistant principal. Enough of a pay raise, he was willing to sell his house to Montgomery and move to Madison County. I mean, it's just, I don't know, I mean, it's not, it's a problem, no doubt about it, because it's tied to local resources, but I also don't know a way to, I don't know a way to change that. Now, with the Teams Act, that's, again, there's, I don't think that's going to happen every year, because what happened in this first year, pretty much anybody that was, say, a principal, if I, if they were a principal and they could get a pay raise by going back to the classroom to teach math, and they wanted to do that, then they made that shift this year. But we won't see that shift again next year, and the year after, and the year after, because it's in place now. You know, hopefully, we will continue to pull people out of private industry, or people who retire early from the military, let's say, and come, become a teacher. But I don't, I think that's probably a one-time shift. But it'll be an ongoing conversation. Because as y'all know, in our, what we sent, you adopted last month and we sent to the governor, we have asked for some big increases for special education teachers. And that will, in some cases, put some of them making more than central office people, maybe, maybe making more than principals, but more than they could make in the central office, or more than they would make, say, as a school counselor. And so, if that passes, the legislature does that, you may see people leaving the central office job to become a special education teacher again. But it's a huge need, so
Dr. Mackey, don't you think, in a nutshell, the answer goes back to what was said in the beginning, that really, in what you've already said, as a former local board member, so much of that responsibility, and we discussed that when the board, at the time, discussed what was going to be happening with principals and putting principals on contract and grandfathering in those who were not wanting to take that step. And the indication was that perhaps those who were grandfathered in would want to move forward with the contract, because the incentive would be there at the local level to increase their salary. And that did happen. I think that's leveled off, because we have pretty much everyone on contract now. But I think it goes back to the answer, in a nutshell, for all of the above, whether it's special ed, bus drivers, math or science teachers, it's a competition at this point beyond what the state, through the legislature, is able to provide financially and otherwise through incentives. We can't, as a state board, necessarily solve that problem, because, again, Yvette knows it as well. Dr. Richardson has been there. And, and all of the others who are sitting around this table know that the competition aspect is what will eventually drive whether or not the salaries increase for principals or anyone else. And it's not a bad idea, frankly. The more you can get it down to the local level, they know best what their needs are. And if they're not willing to compete, then they lose. But if they're willing to compete as a community, and I know that's been a problem here in Montgomery County, watching it and having gone through the schools myself, starting in the first grade, the problem that we have seen is a lack of that competition. We always wanted the best when we were competing with other high schools, even as a student. That needs to return. And until we see that, and the support from parents, if you want to get something done, you get parents involved. Don't push them away. Bring them in. And you, the teachers who know that tool, use it wisely. And that's really where, we could discuss it all day, but we can't solve those problems. We don't, we don't appropriate funds. We can recommend and plead and beg, but ultimately, so much of that needs to go back, because people tend to become more lax when other people are taking care of them. It's a human nature thing. And until they take that load on themselves, we can't solve all those problems.
Excellent.
So, anyway.
Many school districts, even though there is principals under contract, they still do, they do a, they do a matrix for their principals.
But that's their call.
Basically say, either, you know, either, you either work for this, or you don't work for this. That was not the intention of the, the principal contract law, was, was to bring, introduce more negotiation into it.
Well, actually, the intention was to let locals make those decisions. And that's really what we need to push it backwards. We actually need to encourage them to do that. Otherwise, we're not there every day. And we shouldn't be. That's not our goal. But the fact is that we can encourage and we should. And that's where, once they see that need and they start putting signs on buses and, you know, whatever works, they know best, we don't. That may not work in some other parts of the state. And I pick out those places, you know. And people may not even need buses, although when the parents got involved, they kept their buses. You know, it's just one of those things that we're just going to have to rely on the locals.
And we would, of course, Ms. McCray, too, if that's a, I know you don't want to say out here, but if that's somebody we can help, we can look at, try to help them redesign if they're wanting to do some things. You know, we can, we'll work with them. Good point. And we hear it all across the state, not just from your district, so no question about it.
Yep. That sounds good theoretically, but when you're in a school district and they don't have the resources through local funding, it's a concern.
Oh, it is. And I see it in some, there's one county I will not name, beyond Montgomery County, where things are moving along, but it took a lot of people getting involved in Montgomery County. They have become very lax. And you know, from, you know, your experiences on the inside, but it's, the bottom line is that, yes, there, the tax base is not there, and I can think of a county in my district, but at the same time, there are ways that we can come behind and help. But they also can take the incentive. They have that incentive to try to, to get things moving. And I'm thinking of the same county where you have huge turnout for parents and families on a football night, and they're very much involved. And because of that, they've been able to succeed in areas where you wouldn't expect them to otherwise.
The only money that, that passes through the foundation program that can be spent as local, we call it local money, is that OCE money. So other current expense money, they can spend on substitute teachers, spend pay, whatever, hire more school support. But it's, it is chronically underfunded, the OCE line items. And y'all know that. It's funded, it's an amount per unit, is how it's funded through the program. It has gone up in the last few years because the budgets have been good, and so that number has gone up. But also, we find that when there's a shortage somewhere, that's the easiest place to go get money. And so, it's actually gone up and down at points, especially during the eight, nine, 10, and 11, 12 years, there was no consistency in OCE. It has gotten consistent, more consistent now. But, but that's, in some districts, that's really the, that kind of is their local money, especially if they're a 10-mill district. If you're a 10-mill district, so then, almost all the money you raise from property tax, and in some cases, all the money they raise from property tax is pledged toward the foundation program. So all they have is the foundation program. Now, many of them have federal funds. Federal funds are, they're limited. You can add teachers with federal funds, for instance, but usually can't use them to pay the school-level administrator, school secretaries, those kind of things. So they're, they're very tight.
10-mill systems use that money to buy toilet paper, paper towels, sew
They're OCE.
Yes, I'm sorry, OCE.
The gap continues.
That's nice. So lots of larger Dr. Mackey, do we know with the teams allocations, do we know, I think one idea was to maybe attract some people that were in industry and have them come and teach computer science? And also to attract maybe people that were retired from other states and have them come and teach, you know, an incentive, market-driven, as y'all have said. Do we know the numbers that have come from out of state and the numbers who have come from industry?
We're, we're still gathering them, because the, some districts have not even turned in their team stuff yet, but they, but those contracts all come to us, and yes, we're asking those specific questions. Were they teaching math last year, math or science, computer science? If not, what were they teaching? So we will be able to run those, but it'll probably be after the first of the year before we get all of them in. Some, some of the districts, they've already put teachers on teams contracts, but they've not actually done their part and submitted the contracts to us for the reimbursement. So we're working through that process now. I think we've had about, I want to say about 900 approved. Is that about right? Or fewer than that. Jessica's got a, she has an odd look, so it must be fewer than that. So there were, at one point, we had 400 approved, but another 500 that we knew were out there, but they had not all come in yet. And so more are coming in. But I can tell you, generically, it's not as much of that as we had hoped in the first year. What we're more seeing is what Ms. McCray brought up, people shifting within the system. We lost people in Amsty, but not people making big moves. Now, we do have some. I know one, because I ended up meeting up with a teacher in public, you know, running into teachers in the grocery store all the time, I do, who came to Alabama, is not a certified teacher, but he's a, he's a science person, and came to Alabama because of the team's contract thing. Now, it also was that his wife was looking for a graduate program, and some, one of the schools she was looking at was in Alabama. So that was kind of a clincher to them, that she, one of her top choices was one of our Alabama universities, and he could get a team's contract here, so they chose to move to Alabama. So that's one. But how many of those there are out there, we're still gathering.
Dr., I'll be first.
No, I just said, thank you.
Dr. Mackey, one of the things I've done in the last month is ask about funding, because in talking about performance and, and achievement, funding at the local level is important. And your staff was very cooperative to me, Dr. Marcus Chuck, and I first asked for data by school system with local, state, and federal monies, and then ranking. And so then I asked him to just give me total per-people funding ranked from lowest to highest in the state. And I have a report, I've already shared it with Vice President Yvette Richardson. But here is the report, which shows school systems' per-people expenditures for all sources, and their rank from top to bottom. And I realize that this is one data point that affects, funding affects student performance, but there are other factors that we know statistically affects student performance. I think I have enough reports for everyone, and I'd be glad to share one with the media. But when you look at this report of total expenditures, it may be enlightening to you as you look at those systems in your system. I gave a copy to Yvette, and I noticed she's been checking off all these systems that are relative to her. And I looked at systems I worked at, at Pike County, Tarrant City, Limestone in Athens, and seeing what their total per-people expenditures, because you do not, you have to account for federal funds, because they're intended to augment the program, to provide extra teachers. And that's why my comment about Roanoke Schools, who ranks 124.
Where have they?
But Houston County, I'm sorry. So this is not definitive, except it's one data point. And I actually had the ranking, which is a larger matrix, which shows you the local, state, and federal funds. And that doesn't include the ESER funds, I don't believe, Dr. Mackey.
It's not. ESSER funds, this might include ESSER funds.
I'm sorry, you correct my grammar. The ESSER or the CARES funds, which vary dramatically from certain systems to another. And as our systems are planning serving students, they have a body of funding to work on. And so former superintendent and those that have been in leadership, we know how important it is to use all of your funds to serve all of your students. And there are systems that get large federal funds because of the impact of economics. And some use it apparently better than others, based on this ranking. And it is strange, you know, Legacy Prep spends $23,000, $20,000, but they only have like 124 students. That's a, that's an anomaly. But you see where your system falls and how much they spend per pupil. And the data is available. I didn't make it because I'm a numbers guy. Some people say statistics, but I'm a numbers guy, and that was always important in my leadership. And I also know, we've all gotten this, that how much each of our systems are getting from ESSER funds.
Yes, sir. Sorry. Just, we call ESSA funds, E S S A, Title I. What we used to call Title I, we call ESSA now, so it gets very confusing around here.
As I tell the people when I'm traveling nationally, I'm a poor country boy from Alabama and subject to mispronouncing anything. But when we look at the body of funding and the direction that school systems give as state board members and leaders of the State Department and state superintendent, it's important to us looking. And I know that Pike Road, of which my superintendent lives, just passed a large funding increase. And they would, should jump up a lot. Right, Dr. Mackey?
They should jump up. I think they're at the bottom now.
But I mean, they just passed, what, a $25 million tax
Uh, 19 million.
19, a lot of money. But I'm saying that this is not definitive, because there are other economic factors. I did my dissertation years ago under Dr. Keig, and we looked at similar numbers, and, you know, we found that one of the most, one of the most definitive factors was, had to do with criminal education. But we didn't use that data. This is just FYI. Use it as you want to, interpret it as you want to. It's not Wayne Reynolds' data. It's not Wayne Reynolds' presentation. It's not Wayne Reynolds' accommodation or recommendation for any school system. It is what it is. Dr. Mackey, thank you. And I appreciate your staff for presenting this to me. And if you want to, I have the dating sheet available I could have sent to you, which says by each school system, how much federal, state, and local monies they got, and how much per pupil expenditure was, because I just wanted to know it.
And we can print those off, and we did also include that in last Thursday's update, so it's in there. The electronic format is in there, but we
The
Of the whole spreadsheet, the big
The whole spreadsheet, well, sometimes
But it's a lot of
Very obvious, I am in spreadsheets.
Dr. Mackey, will you, please correct me if I'm wrong, an issue that I have with this type of report, and I don't know that the number is in here, so you can correct me. But when I was a local school board member, and this information was put out on per-people expenditure, it also included capital expenses. So if you're building buildings, if you're building schools or adding classrooms, that per-people expenditure is inflated with those capital expenditures. So those funds may not be directly impacting the students' learning. And to the citizens, it appears that you're spending a tremendous amount of money, possibly, and not performing well. Well, it could be that you built a new building that year. Or it could be that you had to expand your career in tech and buy very expensive equipment. So just this report on its face So just this report on its face doesn't necessarily tell you that that is directly impacting teaching and learning. And I think it's a fair point to be made because when I was a local, I had people complain all the time, you guys are just spending all this money. Well, we were having to build an elementary school every two years because we were growing by five hundred students a year. And you have to backfill those teachers and wait for that money to come in through the foundation program. You're, you're constantly losing money year after year because you're, you're getting your funding in arrears. So I just.
Yes, ma'am, that's true.
Want to make that point.
This is all sources, so that would be, includes capital funds, um, federal money, obviously, so, uh, you know, some of those are.
Yes, it can be misleading because if a small system maybe is on here and they're spending, I'll just say eleven thousand dollars per student and maybe they haven't been performing as well, we don't know that they weren't building a building that year or had some sort of emergency expense.
And some of our, that's true, some of our rural systems also have a bizarre, um, I won't, you can see them, I won't call them out. But some of them have, actually some of these that are on the first page, we've had to really work with and help them financially through some hard situations because they, they, they have a lot of money per student, but they may have fewer than a thousand students in the whole county. And so as they spread it out, um, uh, it's, you know, it's just, it's different to look at. For instance, well, bus routes is one of those things.
Transportation.
So if you, transportation is, the closer your students live together, the cheaper transportation per student is obviously. When I was in Jacksonville, I didn't have a route that was more than like seven miles and took twenty minutes because everybody lived in one town. So the cost per student was much less than say a Barber County where they literally might have eight or ten miles between stocks. So, so there are lots of factors that have to go into those, those things and we, you know, look at all that. And, and some of these also do have, they have, uh, committed taxes. So they have taxes that can only be spent on buildings, for instance, or something like that too. So.
And some of them have bond issues that are actually underwritten by counties and cities, which don't show up.
That's true.
And that can see the building that rebuilt the new multi-million dollar high school, but that was funded entirely by the city government, so it works both ways. And I'm not intending this to be definitive, it's a data point. Take it for what it's worth, it's a data point.
Yeah, we do, I mean, we have some, we have some cities where the, the city paid, provides free utilities because the city owns its own utility and they provide free utilities to the school. And those don't show up in these type reports, so there are lots of, lots of factors out there. Are we ready?
We're ready.
Yeah, I think we can go right ahead. Ms. Deborah, can y'all do that? I'm sure they, because they probably have plans after lunch, they'd rather get on. So Deborah Wallace, uh, let me say just quickly about Deborah, she can introduce her team. Uh, now, the Supercomputer Authority is an interesting, this, this group, uh, is a, I'm going to call it a quasi-state agency. They, um, they are funded by the legislature, established by the legislature. As State Superintendent, I am a member of the Board and the Executive Committee. So the State Superintendent is the Chancellor of the Two-Year College System. I can't, there are like three or four of us that are by virtue of our office members. And then there are a couple of at-large members, I think. So, so I have that connection with them. Uh, but they can, they provide computer services and as I mentioned earlier, have really, they've always provided firewalls and some security services, but they have really, really stepped up their game in the last few years because of the need for that. And Deborah Wallace, some of you may not know her, she is not new to Supercomputer Authority, but she is newish in this role as the Director. I guess a year, is that about right? About a year, a year ago that, um, we were glad to make, to vote and raise my hand and say, yes, she's the right person to lead this work. Um, so I'm going to let, she's got, I know Carrie's over there and you've got somebody else with you that I don't know as well. You've had some people retire, so I'm going to let you introduce your team.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dr. Mackey. I appreciate the opportunity to, um, to, to let us present to you what we are doing for K-12. Um, we are, just to give you a little bit of, of history, we, we operate a statewide network where we connect. It's a statewide education network. We connect over six hundred and fifty sites, all education sites, um, from K-12 to public libraries, uh, to the community colleges and universities. Fifty-eight percent of our sites are K-12. And, uh, I've, I've worked, you know, very closely with Dr. Mackey and his team, uh, over the past years. And, and we do, and I, I won't get into our, too much detail of our presentation that, that you'll see. But just to let you know that we've always, um, you know, known the, the struggles that K-12 schools had, the tech directors and the, the, the need for expertise on the technical side. So we, for years, tried to reach out to them and do work for them. But we were created in nineteen eighty-nine as a high-performance computing center. But since then, we also have gotten more into providing internet access to our, to all the schools that we connect to. We file for E-RAY, which brings in that extra funding that helps us pay for that for the, the K-12 schools. Um, we have Security Operations Center now and that's what, uh, Rick is going to speak to you about. Um, and what we're able to do with that and how we're able to, to monitor our entire network. And that primarily is for K-12. But we also have a Network Operations Center in Huntsville within one building. We have our, um, Systems Admin Section in Huntsville that monitors the, the systems that go through our network. And, uh, we have our Application Development Staff there that does work for state agencies. We, we first received, we've always known that security was important, but we first received funding from the legislature in two thousand and nineteen to, to sort of establish, uh, a little more for security. And to set up, uh, education employee training on cybersecurity, on, um, you know, knowing how to recognize what not to, to click on or whatever. And I, I know that Rick's going to touch on that too. But we received, we really just received that money and it was a one-time, uh, fund, uh, funding in two thousand and nineteen. We go to the legislature each year and tell them what we're working on and ask for additional money to beef this up. So in twenty-one, we, we got more money from the legislature to grow our Security Operations Center. And then we asked for CARES Act funding and we put four point six million dollars of, and that was the only CARES Act money we received, but we put all of that money in K-12 schools. And again, this is part of the presentation, but I want you to see where we've been and, and where we are now. And we've done a lot in the past, uh, three years and we, we plan to continue to grow this. Uh, so with me is Rick Bagwell, he is our Network Engineering Manager. He's in the Huntsville Center, I'm in the Montgomery Business Office, but he's in the Huntsville Center. I have Carrie Neal, who many of you probably know. Carrie is our, uh, Governmental Outreach Director and, uh, he is, he is, uh, works with me in the Montgomery Office. Uh, Eric Dorr is our Deputy Program Manager in Huntsville. And then we have David Ivey and I'm not sure if David's in the room, but he is our Program Director.
He's an overflow.
Okay. And, uh, we have a, we have a good staff that puts this together. But, um, again, I appreciate the opportunity to, to let us speak to you and I'm going to turn it over to Rick and he can, he can tell you all the, the details you need and, and be, uh, feel free to ask any questions you'd like. And, and Dr. Reynolds, I was sorry that I wasn't able to visit with you, but I heard good things about your visit and I certainly invite all of you to come up to our center and, and, and see what we have there.
You've got a great staff, incidentally.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deborah, go ahead and flip the slide. So, um, I'm going to talk about a lot of the things that she's kind of mentioned and that is, the first and foremost is our Security Operations Center. So in the past, we had a single person on staff who was our dedicated security person for the whole state of Alabama. Uh, and that's not nearly enough staff, obviously. Uh, with all the ransomware attacks that have come up, with all the problems that the schools are having, you know, we, we've known for many years that we needed to figure out a way to get this funded and get this installed. And we were able to get that done, uh, as Deborah said, in late twenty nineteen, early twenty twenty. So we now have a dedicated Security Operations Center. It's specifically for K-12 right now. Uh, it is not, although our, our customer base includes community colleges and universities and libraries, uh, in order to get, you know, the, in order to get a quality SOC together, we had to kind of limit the scope on that. Uh, and so it, it does a good job of providing a, a, a good level of security. Uh, it's a centralized clearinghouse, if you will. So all of the security data from all of these firewalls that stay off feeds into this. And we have, we have analysts that are very well trained and certified that kind of follow up on the things that our tool shows them. Um, we also, in addition to the SOC, have put in, as she said, expanded training for K-12 schools and faculty and staff. Now, this was really important. This is, this is the stuff that when you work for the federal government, as I have in the past couple of times, you get really, really upset about having to go through one more computer-based training class to learn to not click that link. But let me tell you, it is so important and imperative that you go through that training every year and that you don't click that link because that's the way ransomware starts in these schools. You have teachers or administrators and they find something cool that they, they really like, their hobby, they get an email, they click the link and suddenly their entire school system may have to be shut down for two weeks. That's how ransomware gets in, okay? Uh, one of the main vectors. And so the, the training for that is very, very important. And we've been able to put together, you know, two full years of training for every staff person in K-12 of the state. And I think that's worked really well. Uh, the other big thing that we were able to do, and this was with our CARES Act funding, this is that five million bucks, approximately five million bucks. Uh, we replaced all of the firewalls that are run by, that we run for K-12 school systems. We run the firewalls for about a hundred of the school systems in the state of Alabama. The other ones, many of the other ones have more money, they have staff, they do their own thing and that's great. Uh, but especially for the lower income school systems, we, we provide their, their, their firewalls. And for many of the, of the higher income systems, we provide their firewalls because it's just something they don't have to mess with then. We've had firewalls in place since the early two thousands, but we have not had this new next generation capability that we were able to put in. And, and frankly, the reason is simple, they're very expensive. Uh, and so, you know, we provided firewall service, that was classic firewall service, but this is a much more proactive, much more dynamic system that we've put in, excuse me. The, the last thing we've been able to do recently, uh, is distributed denial of service attack mitigation. You, you may not have heard this term, DDoS, but I, I guarantee you, you've had to suffer from it. If you've ever not been able to get to Facebook or not been able to get to your favorite website or Amazon, probably it was caused by a DDoS attack. This is where somebody runs a botnet and has millions of people trying to hit you at the same time to take a website down. Well, our students figured out, um, about three years ago, that they could order up a DDoS attack against their own school if they didn't want to take a test one night. And so we fought this, we fought this over and over again with various different ways, uh, trying to black hole routes and a bunch of other stuff that I won't go into. It was really hard, it was very hard to fight. Basically, the, the attack happens and it takes you a good thirty minutes, maybe an hour to mitigate that attack. We were able to put in a new system that does it pretty much instantly. It sees the attack and within one minute can mitigate the attack in real time. Uh, and that's, that's been a big bonus. Uh, we still see the attacks, but the students aren't giving their twenty-five dollars worth, I mean, from their day's credit card because the attack's not getting through to the school.
Well, you just disappointed me. I was hoping that you were saying we had students smart enough to do it, they're just paying twenty-five.
They're finding the source though.
They're doing their, doing their homework, but not happy.
And, and it's really kind of funny because, I mean, as a security administrator and as a network administrator, I knew this was happening and it just had to be what was going on. And I, and I went to a conference one time and I've been trying to find these places. I mean, I even got on the dark web and trying to look for where you find these things where you can buy the stuff. And I couldn't find it. And I went to a security conference in Atlanta and the presenter's like, well, they're called booters. Uh, and basically you have kids that are used to playing video games and they're used to paying, paying that extra five bucks for this weapon or eight dollars for this extra life or whatever. And they've got somebody that's attacking them they can't quite beat. So they figure out what their IP address is and they log on and they, and hire a booter to boot him off the internet. That is a denial of service attack. And so, so from the student's point of view, yeah. Yeah, from the student's point of view, it's just something else you buy with day's credit card. It's nothing big, it's not a problem. They don't understand that it's, it's a crime, uh, and then, you know, you could go to jail for this kind of thing. So anyway, in our SOC, we have, uh, we have a couple of different things, uh, that help us to monitor the network uh, and the Security Operations Center is what SOC stands for, of course. Uh, we have our new Palo Alto firewalls, those are the new next-gen firewalls that we've got a hundred of. Uh, and it feeds into a single pane of glass, which gives us automatic, real-time threat, uh, alerts. So our Security Operations Team is looking at that alerts, they're, they're finding problems, they're calling school systems, they're calling administrators at the school systems and saying, this IT address, this computer's got a problem, so you need to fix this. The S I E M, Security and Information and Event Management System, uh, is basically a super net, a super set of the, uh, of the Palo panorama. Basically, it takes in information not just from those Palo Alto firewalls, but also from all our older firewalls and many of our servers and in some cases, firewalls that are managed by the school systems and not us. We are the K-12 SOC. We want information coming to us from anywhere we can get it, right? So if there's a school system that has their own firewall, if they're willing to send us those logs in real time, we're willing to have our team look at them in real time and, and make sure that we can fight, uh, you know, the security problems that we're having. So I, I've mentioned a lot of this, this, this chart is more in my notes than anything, so y'all can have what I just said in the last couple of slides. Uh, I, I will tell you that, um, you know, we only, well, I will say this, in addition to the panorama and the SIM, we also do proactive scans. Um, and what I mean by that is, people on the internet are constantly scanning all of your networks. Uh, I remember the very first time I set up a, a firewall for this one school system, they're like, we want to see those logs in real time. Okay, well, here's your logs. They called me back five minutes later, we're being attacked by China. I'm like, yes, you're being attacked by China. You're always being attacked by China. You're always being attacked by Russia. That's just the way the world works, okay? So what we do actually is, we actually, we don't attack, we don't try to break into school systems. We do scan the school systems to see if there's any open exploits on the servers that we can see. So that lets us know what people in those Scotia, when a hacker's trying to scan you, what they can see. Now, we only do these scans if the school systems have agreed. You know, we're not going to go in and do these scans, uh, unless we have a signed document from them that says, yes, we will allow you to scan. We do those monthly. Um, the other thing that we do in the SOC specifically is firewall reviews. So this is one thing that's burned us in the past, I'll just be honest. With a, with a smaller staff, we have now a larger staff, but with a smaller staff, we run a hundred firewalls. School systems call us all the time and say, hey, can you open this through the firewall so I can get this new server to work? That's running this lunchroom thing or running this, uh, uh, finance thing. Sure, we'll open that up. So we opened it up. They never call me when they decommission that, when they move to a different system, when they get a new lunchroom thing. They never call me up and say, hey, can you fix that, right? So, and we started doing reviews pretty well about four years ago. And we really ramped it up this last year, but four years ago, we found lots of places where we had all these things open up for the access program for video teleconferencing. Those little video teleconferencing systems had been thrown away years ago, but those holes in the firewall are still there, right? Because they never called us to say. And so what we did, when we decided to move to these new Palo Alto firewalls, we said, we're not going to just go in and move the config from that firewall to this new firewall. We could, we figured out ways to do that, there's some scripts that we wrote, we could actually take those, uh, entries and move them directly into Palo. We said, no, we're going to draw a line, we're going to go line by line through every single one of the configurations. So, so we have two engineers on staff that do nothing now, other than review firewall configs for all the school systems. So they are calling the school systems, you know, and, and saying, did you really want to do this? You know, when we get a request that comes in and it's something that's probably not smart, we're going to forward it to the SOC and they're going to explain to them what's probably not smart. In some cases, we'll still do it, uh, as long as we have documentation that says it's absolutely needed and they know and their superintendent knows, we do it. But we're going to, we're going to tell them, we're going to put the flag when we need to. So that's the other thing, the other big feature that the SOC is doing. Uh, so this is just a couple of. So this is just a couple of quick views. I know we mentioned earlier that we do a tour at the Supercomputer Center in the SOC. I'm not going to go over these a whole lot. This just kind of gives you an idea. I know it's really tiny mouse print on my screen and probably on your printout as well. But this is the tenable summary. So this is the summary of scans. So these are places that we've scanned in times when we've seen problems. Now, if we see a low or a medium or sometimes even a high, those can be, in some cases, ignored or at least not brought immediately to the school system. But if you see criticals, those are going to get calls to the school systems immediately. So say, "You've got something open here that doesn't need to be open." Go ahead and hit the next button. See, we'll go through these pretty quick because I know we're running. So this is the scheduling from a couple of, I guess this is back in November 3rd, we pulled this up. This shows, you know, we do, like I said, we scan every single school system that's in the SOC that has allowed us to scan. We scan them once a month. And so, you know, you'll see there, we have from the 3rd, I don't know, it looks like 10 or 12 different sites are going to be scanned that day. And then our Security Operations Center staff will then look at those scans. If they see anything critical, again, they'll immediately contact the school system. If it's not quite so critical, they'll put in a report and send it to the school system. We are also automating, we should have it done by the first of the year. In the past, what we've done for the last year is we only send them reports when something's wrong, okay? And that's great, but people then forget that we're doing this scan, right? And so then we call them up when something's wrong. They're like, "We didn't know you were scanning this." "Yeah, you did. Here's the thing you saw." But so what we're starting to do with the first of the year is send them a report that basically has a summarize, a summary of the actual scan and whether or not it's good or bad. You know, one of the things that security researchers do a lot of times to raise their rates is they'll give you the full report that this tool generates. It's about this thing, okay? And because it shows absolutely everything it can possibly see. And it also gives you recommendations on how to fix things. But we try to summarize that down to one or two pages. So that's the other thing that's really important that our group does. This is the screen from our SIEM. And again, this is the device that aggregates all of the traffic, all of the security notifications from the firewalls, whether we operate them or not, and the servers that are all feeding into our SIEM. And this is just one of the examples of one of the dashboards. You can see there's a bunch of tabs are at the top with different dashboards. And these are all obviously looked at all the time. This is also from that SIEM, JSA SIEM, and shows you, you know, source and destination IP addresses, some possible problems that folks are seeing, you know, whether it's malware. You know, these are the kind of things that we're going to use when we contact the school system and say, "Hey, we're seeing some weirdness coming from this IP address." A lot of times what we are seeing, and one of the things that we've been very thankful for over the last year with our SIEM, in the past, we would get notices from outside entities like CISA or MSIZ, or these security entities that are outside of the state that says, "Hey, we believe you got a compromised computer over here because we're seeing traffic that's indicative of a botnet or of a malware, you know, ransomware." And so then we take that and we contact the schools. That's really reactive. That's days after the problem has actually occurred, right? With this system, it's much more proactive. You know, we see the stuff that they were seeing. And so we see it first and we can get in there and start working on it. One of the things we see a lot are what we call precursors. So you have these things where there's a piece of malware that gets on the system and you know if a system has that piece of malware, they're probably going to have a ransomware attack because that piece of malware is trying to talk to a command and control server on the internet that does nothing but run the botnet and run the ransomware network. And so we can call them up and say, "Hey, you've got this precursor. You need to look at this one right now. You know, you need to go find that computer right now, get it off your network because it's got something bad on it." And that's one of the things that's also great about these new Palo Alto firewalls, initiative firewalls, is they are constantly being updated with new lists of command and control servers for the bad guys. So when they see traffic going to those servers, well, first of all, they're going to stop it. And second of all, they're going to send an alert to JSA and say, "Hey, you need to, y'all need to look at this." Again, we've covered a lot of this because I just talk randomly and don't ever follow my charts evidently. But one of the things that was kind of interesting about the funding for the Palo Alto firewall project is we, it was kind of last minute, you know? We were getting questions from the state, you know, it's like, "How would you like to use your CARES Act funding?" And we're looking at, you know, the problem that we have with kids going home for extended periods of time and working remotely from the house. And you don't know what kind of antivirus, anti-spam, you don't know what kind of training those teachers, I was just teachers, those parents or students or their brothers and sisters have had. And so then you're bringing those computers back into the schools again because you're doing hybrid models, right? It's like, what we really need is better firewalls that are more proactive and let us see more of these malware stuff. And so that's why we decided to ask for the funding in the CARES Act project. They did give us a little bit of a monkey wrench. They said we had to get it installed in six weeks. And so I had to install 100 firewalls in 100 school systems in six weeks. And that was tough. What we did was we actually shipped the devices directly to the schools and then we actually called each school system and walked them through, plug this cable into here, plug this cable into here. And then we configured them with what's called zero touch provisions. So we pushed the configuration down to them. They never came to the Supercomputer Center in Huntsville. This is what we usually do. We usually bring all the stuff to Huntsville, we configure it, we ship half of it to Montgomery, and then we disperse it through the state. But this time, we shipped everything directly to the schools. We did have it all installed and in use by the end of 2020. And so, we started like this time in 2020 and we were done by December 15th, 16th. We were done before Christmas holidays. We knew we had to get it done before Christmas holidays because all those technology coordinators are going to go on vacation. You know, some of them worked over the holidays because it's a great time to do network changes, but a lot of them just want to go home with the family. So, you know, we made sure we did that. So this was our deployment model to do that. And I won't go into a whole detail on this. Let's just say that we started on the left side with our Juniper or Cisco firewalls. We ended up on the right-hand side with just the Palo Alto firewalls. And in the middle, we might have them together in serial so that we could put functionality immediately on the Palo but not have to migrate the whole config from the Juniper or Cisco box to the Palo. So that's how we were able to do it so fast. We have spent the last year getting all of the old Junipers and Ciscos out and getting completely moved to the Palo. I think we have four of the old Juniper or Cisco boxes still in production. And those are scheduled to be out of production within the next week or two. So we're on track to get completely done with that part of the migration this year. This is just a list of all of the school systems that have the Palo Alto firewalls. Those are actually their host things and that's actually a screenshot from the management system. If you don't see your favorite school system up there, it's probably because they run their own firewall. Well, it definitely is because they run their own firewall. So I've talked a little bit about this and I'll just kind of go over it a little bit more. So the big thing that the Palo Alto's do for us is the next-gen features. You know, normal firewalls, you can just open up things to go through the firewall and you're good. But what the next-gen features do is basically makes the firewall into a true intrusion detection system, intrusion prevention system. That's what IDS IPS stands for. Apologize if I'm not giving you that acronym. I'm guilty of using TLAs way too much. TLAs are three-letter acronyms. So threat prevention subscriptions, this is where we have dynamic lists being sent to these firewalls constantly that update. So that way you can identify all those problems. I already mentioned that. And URL filtering. Now, you know, obviously with K-12 school systems, content filtering is a big issue. And we did get the license for our Palos to provide content filtering with them. But I've kind of stressed to the technology coordinators, that's not this guy's main job. This guy's main job is intrusion detection and firewalling and threat prevention. It's not keeping kids away from porn, okay? The school systems generally have their own stuff to do that. They have eyeball servers. They have stuff that's run by Google that works with the Google infrastructure. And we do provide some of that as well. And you can use the system for that. But this system, Palo Alto, as well as its design, it is designed as an enterprise-class business firewall. And so it doesn't have as many categories as you would probably want to add in K-12 school systems. And so we still kind of recommend that they use a separate dedicated appliance for content filtering. This is another console. Again, I just throw these up there. These are some of the screenshots of some of the stuff you see in real time when you come through our tour in Huntsville. But this, again, this kind of shows, these are things that have popped up as problems. And you'll see on here where they're coming from, where they're going to. The source addresses, if they start with a 10 or 192.168 are actually inside the school systems. Those are private addresses inside the school systems. The destination addresses are public IP addresses that are out on the real world. And, you know, like I said, the, one of the jobs of the panorama firewalls is to keep lists of bad destination addresses. These are things we don't want the school systems going to. And that's what flags and puts alerts, especially if it's a specific type of traffic. And this actually shows you all the way down to exactly what kind of traffic it is. This is the zoomed-in version of that because I knew that was hard to read and I figured you might want to read some of it. I did. I was fairly careful. I went through this and took out any names so, you know, to protect the innocent. Those, some of those addresses are public, but all of that stuff is secure, so it shouldn't be a problem. And this is another, one of the things that we also were doing is we are going to be giving, we haven't done it yet except for a pilot project for about three or four school systems. But we're going to be giving the school systems access, the technology coordinators at each school system, or technology directors at the school system, access to the Palo Alto firewall so they can log in themselves and see the traffic that this sees. They don't get to, they only get to change the configuration. You know, we don't want a million different people making different changes in these things. But they get to log in and see, so they can look at their network traffic, they can look at threat activity. They don't have to call me up and say, "Hey, Rick, you see something bad," right? They can look in their own stuff. If they're slow, if they're having problems, they can log into this and see what their top talkers are, who's doing the most, what kind of traffic it is, that kind of thing. And this particular screen shows exactly that. On the, in the little box grid there at the top, you'll see Google Base is the largest talking or the biggest talker. And what that is, more than likely, is Chromebook updates. We've had, we've actually had some issues recently with Google deciding that they want to push updates harder than the school systems want to receive them. And in some cases, that's actually caused school systems' internet to be down, at least from the point of view of a user, for maybe even an entire day. And the problem there is that Google's pushing updates to 5,000 Chromebooks at the same time to one single school system. Now, there are ways in Google's system where you're supposed to be able to tell it to spread those out, but there was a glitch a few weeks ago where Google just decided to dump in huge amounts of stuff. We actually, at the Super, on our network, we have a 100-gig connection directly to Google. So I have 100-gig pipe that's in my cage in Atlanta where our, here for the Supercomputer Authority's network sits. I have 100-gig connection to Google. That was just recently upgraded. We had 210 gigs until about a month and a half ago, two months ago. And on 210 gigs, we rarely got more than 13 gig across that, okay? We installed a 100-gig connection and then they had this glitch and we were sucking up 60-plus gigabits per second from Google and basically just firehose in the schools. So I think they've got most of that fixed, but that kind of goes to show you what they can use this chart for. If they do see a problem with their network, they can log in here and see exactly what the traffic that is on the network. We mentioned this before, but I wanted to throw kind of the names of stuff up at least. We do have training that is available, computer-based training that's available for all of the schools, the staff and faculty for all the schools. We're using two different things. KnowBefore is one company and Threat Advice is the other. I've used both. I like Threat Advice because it lets me take the tests without actually going through the material. So if you know your stuff, you can just go through it real quick. I'll just be honest. It's probably not the best thing for me to admit to doing in front of my boss, but hey. KnowBefore, actually, is really kind of entertaining. It's made up, a lot of the modules are like sitcoms where you're watching this sitcom of these people in an office, learning about security stuff and doing stupid things you should never do so that you didn't know how to, it's almost like watching Seinfeld. But so I think both of them are very useful. Neither of them are arduous, but they make you look at the things that you're supposed to be paying attention to in the cybersecurity realm.
And just a side on that, so Threat Advice is the one we require here for the department too. And everybody, from me to our newest ASA employee, everybody has to do it annually or they lose access to their email. And I get a report about a week before they're losing access of who's left. And I personally get in touch with them and make sure everybody does it. But we do that. We're very serious about it. I know that you are. But a lot of our schools were not, before ASA took this on, to me, this is the, one reason is I wanted to stop you. Of all the presentations, this is one of the most important because, as has been mentioned, you can invest in all the security stuff and if a bad email gets through and somebody clicks on it, you lose it. And most of our districts were doing zero training before this came out. So when you see there 144 are using this, that's really stark improvement. And I think it's why we've had many fewer successful attacks in the last few months.
I think, you know, it's definitely a combination of this training plus the better firewalls that we have in place plus the Security Operations Center being very proactive about stuff. I think all those absolutely deserve credit for the fact that we've not had too much trouble lately.
Matty, Huntsville City was one of those that was victim of ransomware. When I had the opportunity to visit it with him, we discussed the fact that Huntsville used to have their own system. Now they use these highly experienced and competent and rapidly developing and training people. They changed. You, I went through this and there and I saw you, I was clearly eyed, but I learned a lot. And it's a fantastic job to protect the economics and security of our system. And it's, I've got an email I got today about some parent and their Chromebook and whatever. I'll share with you. But it's not a new problem.
So this just shows a few of the modules in the KnowBefore. And it's not Know5, by the way. That is a typo. I had, one of the guys that helped me.
It'll be fine.
Yeah, and one of the guys that's actually helping me proofread this pointed that out. I told him it was, it's just the new version. It'll be fine. But no, that's just me and not typing right. Apologize for that. But it kind of shows you some of the stuff that you're going through. One of the things that they're doing, you know, is in addition to the "Don't click that link, watch out for your credit card" stuff, there's also some really good modules in the, on working from home, you know? And I think that's important too because there are still, you know, folks that are, because they get quarantine or whatever, are working from home still. So this is, I mentioned our DDoS system. This is just a snapshot of one day. And each one of those red dots is a distributed denial-of-service attack that tried to hit our network. And, you know, if you look at the really tiny mouse print at the bottom, you can probably figure out where they were attacking. But, you know, the good news is because they're on this screen, they got stopped. They were not able to launch that attack against us and it was successfully mitigated. So, you know, we, especially my senior engineers that were spending hours playing whack-a-mole trying to fight these denial-of-service attacks, love this new system. Because now all we do is we look on the screen every day and we're like, "Ah, it's working. So, good." So I threw a couple of charts. This is pretty close to the end of the presentation. So if there's any questions about security or what we're doing at the Supercomputer Center or how we work or how it's set up, I'm happy to take those questions. These are the bandwidth levels that we're currently providing to the school systems if they could show me. So the school systems that are on our network get up to 1.5 gigabits per second that is funded through ASA's appropriation with the E-rate match, of course, on that funding. And we also provide connectivity to individual schools at those high school, middle school, elementary school levels. If school systems want more than that, then they pay the delta, basically. They still get, you know, E-rate pays for up-the-line share of it. And they pay the difference in the match between what ASA would have paid for 100 meg connection. If they want a gig connection in an elementary school, for example, you have that that's going on there. So this has just been a very popular program. You know, we do get the occasional school system, I talked to one yesterday, who, you know, wants, "When do I get my 1.5 gig?" I'm like, "Well, since you're only using 200 megabits per second, you don't right now get 1.5 gig." You know, we're very cognizant that we want to be good stewards of the state's money and the federal government's money. And so we don't overbuild, but we try to make sure that we're ahead of the curve. We're looking at utilization statistics constantly for pretty much everybody on our network to make sure that we are ahead of that curve.
So a big success story there. You know, the success stories are the ones, the stories that aren't stories. Some of you remember, some of you were on the board, when we first did online student assessment and within... assessment and within, uh, what was the ACT, Espa-
Espa.
And we, they could do it, they could do paper pencil, or they could do online, but Mean District chose online. And we actually had some sites that crashed because we had more students trying to take the test than there was capacity. Knowing that was coming, Deborah, in her previous role as Assistant Director, we started talking about this four years ago, um, when we were working on a new test, and when the committee early on recommended that they wanted only online for everybody. All the tests would be online, so all the students would have the same, uh, opportunity. And we met then and started talking about this, um, and I think I was, uh, nice but adamant that we, it could not crash, and they were very responsive. And we had not one thing to go wrong this past spring, so like, we had the other things with the pandemic, but with that 95% participation rate, we, because they were monitoring it and if schools needed more capacity, they can turn it up or down to make sure students, you know, that students don't get slowed down in the test. Now, we also had an expanded window last year, so instead of everybody doing it three weeks, we had six weeks, and we will again this year. But we already know that as we get into spring of '23 and that window gets tighter, we'll have to keep expanding this. And, and I have to say, big appreciation to, to y'all and to the legislature because faster internet costs more money, just like it cost us at home. And as we went to them and explained that, they did, uh, increase the appropriation so we would not have that, that slowdown. It's just, I mean, I don't have to tell y'all, with the, the amount of video that's being downloaded in the school every day now, it's not just, it's, it's not one-way communication. It's, they're watching these, you know, these videos, like YouTube videos, that are using a lot of bandwidth, and it can be going on in multiple classrooms all the time. So, I, I appreciate that, what he said about they, they watch that and they increase bandwidth as they need to, so schools don't stall out.
Um, so my final, my final chart here was just kind of an overview of what we do, and Deborah already talked to most of this. Uh, my, my baby is the network. So the, my team is primarily responsible for running the state education network. Uh, and right now, the configuration of that network is we have, we have hubs, we have dual hubs in Huntsville, Montgomery, and Birmingham. That is, we have two physical locations in each of those cities, uh, that are connected to each other with high-speed connection and also connected in the backbone. Uh, we also have a hub in Atlanta. Uh, we used to have a hub in Mobile, uh, we don't anymore because we found it was actually less expensive just to bring those schools into Birmingham, into Montgomery, or into Atlanta. Uh, so that was, uh, kind of a surprise to us, but, uh, it, it worked out saving us a good bit of money. Uh, but, uh, as far as internet, we bring in very high-speed connections in Atlanta, at, uh, in downtown Atlanta, 56 Marietta, which is the place everybody meets in the southeast for all internet. Uh, and then we also have connectivity coming into Huntsville directly from carriers and in Birmingham directly from carriers. Uh, and I mentioned our connection to, uh, Google. We do have direct peers, that is, we don't pay anything for them, they don't pay us for them, we, we hand them a cable and they feed our network. Uh, and that goes to Google and to Amazon and to Facebook, uh, and Netflix, and I'm leaving out a few, we have several of them. Uh, but those are anywhere between 10 and, well, actually, in the case of Amazon, it's now 200 gig connection to Amazon. Uh, and no, people don't go shopping that much. What that is, is that's, Amazon Web Services, AWS, is a big cloud provider, and so a lot and lot of applications run off of them, it was on web services, and so they get fed into our network through those connections.
So y'all provide high-speed internet to schools in Alabama and in rural areas where children don't have internet at home. That's, for a lot of them, that's their only opportunity there, so what you do is you enter that. I get up, hit, I get hit up sometimes by broadband providers wanting to know why there's not a bidding process, but what I'm going to tell them is that you're, you're funded by the state and the federal government, and you don't have to.
We, and, and to, to reach those students that don't have, um, internet at home, we, we, in 2019, we also got funding from the legislature to add, um, 100 meg, which doesn't sound like a lot, to all the public libraries, but it really, and put Wi-Fi in so that those public libraries could close at 5:00, and then the students could come up and sit in the parking lot and access the internet. So that's proved to be very successful too, and again, that was from some of the money that the legislature appropriated for us.
And that's, and that's not 100 meg cable modem connection, that's 100 meg fully bidirectional fiber connection, uh, to those libraries, uh, and, you know, that, that has been very popular. And in many cases, those libraries were upgraded from 1.5 gigabits per second, I mean, it's 1.5 megabits per second DSL, you know? Tiny little connections that could barely run one or two computers.
So they, we've had, we've had a lot of success stories with public libraries. We've been traveling around for the past two years just to meet with those librarians, and, and they are so excited to have that bandwidth. And it, that was, you know, pre-COVID, so it really came in to play when COVID hit, but we were just trying to do it to get, you know, some internet services out there for those rural areas. But again, it's, it's, I think it's important for you to see the map, and I think you have a, one of the brochures, and it shows a, a better map, that we, we do have internet in every county in the state. Uh, but we are an education network, we don't connect to houses, but we certainly have laid the foundation to get internet to every county and to all these areas, so that it can be built upon by, um, this, this new broadband, uh, expansion authority. And I, I work very closely with them to let them know where we are so that it can be expanded upon, so.
I will say, we talked about market availability, market market. We're fortunate to have people with your expertise, and if you visit their site and get a tour of their towers, it's overwhelming. And I am a certified network administrator, and I was, I saw Dr. Mackey, she get clearly eyed, but you're, y'all are doing a fantastic job.
Well, I appreciate that. It's, it's, uh, I'm just, I'm just happy to, to be able to lead this very talented team that I have.
They're talented, overwhelmingly talented.
Yes, they absolutely are. And, and I just want to say one more thing, what we're doing in our Security Operations Center, we went from one person to five people. That still is not enough, so, uh, we're trying to get the word out that we do need more, because we, we have one analyst for every 26 schools. So there's a lot going on in just one school, and when one analyst is responsible for 26 schools, and that's just an average, but we need more, you know, we need more analysts in our Security Operations Center. But Rick and his team do an outstanding job with, with what we're doing, so.
I have to say personally, that it's, it's interesting to see how you have evolved, um, starting in 1989. I didn't come on board until 1995, but you were just a baby. And it was, um, trying to build, you were trying to build, and the operation was starting to kind of get involved with, of course, our two-year colleges, which this board used to oversee, and primarily at the time, and some other business interests, but it was, it's interesting to see how now, um, there's so much involvement in K-12 at a time when we really need, uh, for example, the firewalls and all of the mitigation with the attempts. It's, it's been fun listening to all of you talk about it and share your recent experiences based on all of the discussions that we had 10, 20 years ago, and it's, um, it's a lot. And where you have, we have different locations, and you know what it was primarily at that time, so, thank you.
Thank you so much. We will reconvene at 1:30. Thank you.
Launch the board up the stairs, this is-
Dr. James?
Yeah, yeah.
Who would possibly be number five on the agenda?
I'm sure.
Yes, yes.
Jacksonville State?
Jacksonville.
Yes, so Ms. White, you can go back to Jacksonville. So this is, uh-
Alabama State Board of Education Elementary and Secondary Education Work Session will now reconvene. Dr. Mackey?
So we're going to, we're gonna skip item two. We're not gonna do away with it. We'll come back to item two and then we'll do, Dr. Richardson and I were talking, we'll do two through 13 after 14. But we've got some guests here and we told them we'd try to do it at 11, at 1:30. So Tim McCarty and Alan Harris and Nick Moore and I know they've got some other folks with them. And I'll let Tim, I'll turn it over to you and let you introduce everybody. But, I don't know, just walked in. So does anybody need any coffee or anything first? Board members, y'all want some? A little bit of fresh coffee?
You know I have more.
I'll get mine in a few minutes.
You were ahead of us. You were ahead of us. You know where to go. All right. Well, thank you. I'm gonna pass these out. Send those down to that side. Thank you. And good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm a member of the State Board of Education. We appreciate y'all letting us be here today.
Thank you.
I wanted to point something out before we get into the meat of our message. But we may use the term "we" a lot. And when we're using the term "we," it means us and the board. Because we view y'all as partners. So don't be offended if we take credit for something that y'all did. We're in it together, okay? So I want to be sure you knew that. I'm the chairman of the Alabama Workforce Council appointed by Governor Ivey. And I think y'all know Workforce Council's been around since around 2014 and consists of about 35 executive-level industry members from all over the state and various industries. And we meet and work with different agencies and boards. Dr. Mackey's an ex officio member of the board of the Workforce Council. But we work together to try to come up with policies that will help improve our state. So we're in here, we're in this to improve our state. And from a workforce perspective, and that's the perspective we come from, because I'm retired from the highway construction industry. Mr. Harris here is still, he's a lot younger than I am, but he's still active in the building construction industry. And the folks we've brought with us today, which we'll introduce on their own, are all from industry. So we're giving you an industry perspective on what we think is needed to help improve our workforce situation. We all know the COVID environment created an environment we're all in that's making, I know it's tough for the school system, it's tough for industry, it's tough for everybody. But we've got to overlook that. That's not an excuse. It's just a variable we have to deal with. And I think there are a lot of people out here, these folks behind me, they are all working in industry to figure out a way to work with these problems. It's just another challenge. So everybody has challenges every day. So again, I want to thank all of y'all, Dr. Mackey with his leadership, for doing the work y'all did last year on the, we presented the nine points to y'all back in, I believe it was August of last year. Particularly, you got the FAFSA ruling, the policy passed. Now, that's big. That's really big. We've got to do, we've got to work with y'all to do the work we need to get the awareness out there. And we've got people that can help on that. So we've got to get the parents and the students to understand the importance of it. That's just a lot of money. And anything that bothers a businessman or a woman is leaving money on the table. You know, I was in the low bid business. And if we bid a job and we left a lot of money on the table, it was, it was, cost you money, but it also tore you. It's like, what did we do wrong? So anyway, at this time, I want to introduce Mr. Harris, Alan Harris, who is the CEO of Bailey Harris Construction in Auburn. They build companies, Bill Vallow of the state, you, but some of these impressive buildings in town, the Judicial Building, and several of the RSA buildings, and that's big work. So Alan's been with the company for a long time, run it, and he's the head of it, and very impressive company. Alan's gonna talk to you about the, we had nine points last year. We've added one. We've got ten. So Alan, I'm gonna turn four over to you now.
Thank you, Tim. I appreciate that very much. I'm not worthy, but I'm here. And also here with me quickly is Peggy Sees, Druid Healthcare Systems, a healthcare professional, Tuscaloosa, drove down. Seth Hammitt, Andalusia Montgomery, ex Speaker of the House, and in the business development sector now with Energy. Casey Pang, Industry, Thomasville, drove up. And he was at one time a UAB educator for many years. Phil Webber, of course, from Anniston, came down, a material supplier. And I think what, as well as all these people being very professional, they have a few things they want to share from their heart, a little later, okay? So what we want to talk about, first of all, I appreciate the time. Well, I try to be brief and not get on the interrupter. I've got a script I'll stick to. I've been on Workforce Council since inception. They won't let me go, because they can't get anybody else. But it's-
We both work for a very reasonable rate.
Yes. If they doubled our salary, it wouldn't affect us. But we work together for the state that's been good to us, and fully believe we have to pay it back. So that's kind of where this comes from. It all started on a study two years ago, or three years ago, with improving Alabama's image. And so we got to look in that way. It needed help. And a lot of blame. So again, thank you for being here. Dr. Mackey, always be good to be with you. You may recall that we met August thirteenth last year with this board in this room, and laid out several nine-point recommendations. Products made on several of those, good products made on several of those, and we're grateful for that. Since that time, we've funneled down to some really important stuff. Industry and business and education, neither can exist without the other. Industry constantly competes for its existence. As problems arise, and they do every day, they must be solved, or we close doors. And they always cost money to solve. But that's what we do. Industry is driven to improve quality all day long, day. Education's not a business, but education must be constantly driven to excel, says that education turns out a good product for gain and employment. And it's not easy. We're here today to lend support for K-12 and its endeavors to improve. Everyone here today is cognizant of Alabama's rankings in comparison metrics with other states. What we hear from our, the main things we hear from our industries is, for example, too many graduates that cannot read professionally and are unable to fill out a job application form. And of course, now fifty percent of the application forms are online. Another, on production lines, we hear this from everyone, on production lines, on, like a construction site like ours, workers must be able to add, subtract, and count to a hundred. Less than forty percent can. If we tell somebody, "Go give me, bring me thirty scalpels," they'll come back with seventy. Or if I tell them ten, they'll come back with two. That's just, we see this everywhere. On production lines, you can't be hired if you can't keep a quota and count, and count. A troubling issue, another troubling issue is that few of our high school grads understand the importance of showing up for work, staying off cell phones, obeying the rules, and particularly, to save the rules. Industry struggles, biggest struggle across the board right now is no-shows. Employees that don't show up for work. And a little bit more on that later. And then I hear plant managers quit constantly. Our younger, the graduating seniors, like the younger people, have little to no soft skills training. And I say, so what do you call soft skill? Common courtesy. And they don't have that. And in our business, this is very important. I mean, last week, I told Eddie I have to tuck shirt tail in. I said, "You look more professional when you shirt tail in, Eddie. Just tuck it in." Had that three, four times. And he's kept it tucked in, and he looks more professional. That's a soft skill. Maybe I'm a little too detailed, but my daddy always taught me to tuck mine. As members of Alabama industry, we come this morning, as Tim said, to be partners, but we come as customers, because you're supplying the product we need. As partners, since we're willing to assist you to prepare students for the workforce, more on that later, and as customers, since we need your students to grow our industry. And as fellow Alabamians, we need to align. There's no end to the alignment, no, no end to the benefit from aligning, working together, team. We want to thank the board for its service and for the love of the state, for you wouldn't be here if you didn't care. I also want to thank AWC council members for their service, the love of the state, and for the drive up here against their fellow family. Again, we come before you as partners and customers to convey our need to accomplish those ten-point recommendations that are just that recommendation. Their recommendations from industry that we like to see will better, better your product. And we feel pretty strong about it. Worked on this, this, particularly this, over a year. Lot of input. The National Association for, the National Association for Educational Progress, as you educators know, NAEP, is the comparative measure of Alabama's educational ranking against all other states. Like it or not, and I know many of you don't, but it's all we got, the NAEP is a metric that is used by other states against us when they recruit against us. More than that. Well, now, Greg Canfield will quickly inform you of the disadvantage of being at the bottom of K-12 as he attempts to bring industry to Alabama. Because you court these industries, but at some point, they have people coming over with kids. "What about your school?" Being fiftieth in fourth grade math, and forty-seventh in fourth grade reading is not acceptable. But it's no different in industry if we continue to produce a faulty product. One, one bad product, and it's a problem. So we can't continue to do that, because it's not acceptable. We got to get better in math and reading, and I know you know this. But also, the council is pleased that the 2019 math and the 2021 English is aligned to the NAEP framework. We believe this work is not finished. We think it's time to remind everyone that over the last ten years, and I didn't realize that just a few weeks ago, that there've been so many assessments, there've been changes in assessments, changes in standards, changes in student retention. Numerous excellent programs also that have been presented have fallen by the wayside, as another program such. So this is an area that needs consistency and accountability, and only leadership will cure that. This is the leadership of State Department of this case, right? It's got the, the only way to cure it, so. The Alabama Committee on Credentialing and Career Pathways, the HCCC, has furnished CAREETTE, the list of in-demand jobs for all seven Alabama workforce regions, and a statewide list of jobs that are on the majority of regional lists. And it's imperative that these lists align to the CTE programs over the industry, that would go in the same place. Now, you know you've been doing a good job on this when the Department of Labor and the Department of Commerce adopted these lists as their official labor list. So when Greg Canfield shows off, he's got a list, a list of jobs that were put together between you all at CTE. It's a textbook example of business and industry working together. We commend Dr. Mackey and Dr. Hull, well, you in the corner, we commend you for working with us in that commitment to business and industry alignment with HCCC's in-demand occupation credentialing. We also plan to work more with Dr. Hull and each of the CTE directors in every region, and the ALA, Alabama Office of Friendships, Josh Lane, to expand the friendships and work-based initiatives statewide. This is huge. Friendships are huge. And it's, you know, we need people that build tables as well as people that go to college, because we need people to use their hands. Industry is baffled that the graduate waste exam was banned in 2013. We believe now is the time to act. Alabama's remediation rate, rate of plus or minus forty percent is prima facie that too many graduates are not career or college ready. We can do better. Therefore, given the governor's push to expand the college and career readiness, and given the alignment with a CTE between education and industry today, we would like to petition this board to pass an administrative rule code change that will require and allow your students to earn at least one college and/or career readiness indicator as a qualification and a benefit for graduation. We believe this is the right course for industry, get us, get us heading in the right direction and the right course for K-12. We see only positive things coming out of us. As previously mentioned, the most challenging item for our industries is no-shows. Workers with a misplaced focus on what is important. That's the bottom line. Now, prior to April 2019, the ALSTE allowed fifteen student absences and the students to graduate. In April 2019, this board increased the number of absences by three to eighteen. Our industry's adamant that they think, and I hear this from all, everybody when we talk about this, that by an excessive number of absences sets their student up for no-shows, for failure by diminishing their focus to be at work every, at work every day. And not only that, the Alabama State Department of Education's Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSL, on page twenty-nine, shows chronic absenteeism is scheduled to drop to ten absences per year for the school year 2030. And further, the same plan recommends that by twenty, by 2023, I'm sorry, that should be ten absences by 2023. And the same plan calls for five absences by 2030. We like? If someone misses one of our, two or three times on one of our projects, oh, yeah, that's it. If not, they, they don't help you. Kudos to Representative Allen Baker, and I got to mention him, his Sick Leave Conversion Act, which should help with teacher absenteeism. The teachers you want and we want are those that actively miss very few days because of their love of their work, and it's a passion for what they do. The importance of good teachers was also recognized by Donna Chastain with the Teams Act. We love this legislation. And we love Tara Collins and all she does. She's got a bigger heart for this place than many people want. If you put the right mix of teacher absenteeism and student absenteeism together, you're missing thirty-three percent of classroom time. Because the second day, you know, the student comes back, they've got to repeat or lose it. Teacher comes back, got to go back through it. And so these are really big deal stuff. These legislators, which I know you love dearly, are indispensable, and we just tell, are indispensable to improve Alabama's image. And that's what we want, Alabama's image. We all know that the teacher's the most important person in the school day for this department, and it's really important. The link to providing educational data and workforce data has been solved with the Alabamas Terminal for Linking and Analyzing Statistics. In that, the program is there to show clear data, trends, identify policies that are not working, et cetera. But it's a bit of a sticky wiki. We need the board's assistance and oversight with a robust database, improving our educational system, and make sure that this data is shared timely, regardless of what the data shows. We believe that the utilization of this data will improve some of the low metrics that we're trying to cure. Other states do this. Other states have the data system, and that you, we, we need to do that. So I'm on the sweep. So Jesse Freeman, one of my loyal employees for twenty-seven years, used to say when we started a project, "Bob, we have a wet to do here." Same, yes, we do. And what industry expects is results. That's all that matters. So at the end of the day, to the top guy and to the public, it's results. In closing, let me say that Alabama has been mighty good to me. I love the state. I don't want to play education caliber in Canada. You school board members signed on for pain and glory. There's far too little glory in this moment. As Alabamians, the word "can't" should not be in your vocabulary. The only way out is up, and the only way to get there is with leadership. All of you in a leadership position to make it happen, Dr. Mackey is tasked with the supreme leadership to work with you to get the job. Think out of the box. Can we not professionally recruit teachers from surrounding states? Hire recruiters, just like we do in business, find people. Will not lower student absenteeism spawn fewer teacher absences? Also, we expect you to be less tolerant. As with industry, you're only as good as what you tolerate. Continue to tolerate faulty product, then you're not doing anything. We're all, one other thing, reject apathy wherever you see it, because, and this is paramount, because it will kill every effort you have. Go about it. We're all Alabamians and shall not pit ourselves one against the other. We work together. There's no better class of people than Alabama folks. Many plant managers that come here from afar, didn't want to, they get here, they won't leave. They had no idea Alabama has it all, has a wonderful, we just need more of us. We need our image to perk up, so people will want to come to Alabama, because I want to live in Alabama. So those glory days will come, and when they do, you that caused it will look back and say, "This is good." Now, if we can start with some of our board to have a few comments, we'll start with Peggy Sees. Ladies first, of course. Peggy Sees.
Thank you. As Alan said, I'm happy to be here and very proud to be part of Alabama. I moved here back in 2008, and with the intentions of staying maybe two or three years. And when I first got here in southeast Alabama, I said maybe one year. And then I had a child that started at Alabama, and I've been here, and this is my home. I got married just recently, about two years ago, had the divorce about twenty-three years, I'm stopping to think, before I ever remarried. So Alabama's my home. We live in Muraff, Alabama, which is outside of Tuscaloosa. So I'm a good country lady that grew up in the country, in South Carolina. But I work at DCH, I'm the VP of HR there. And we, as Alan talked about, we're having a difficult time hiring and finding the right people. And it does start at school. It also starts at home, too, to educate our young and make sure they get exactly what they need. So I always talk about, I'm very passionate about healthcare, and very passionate about hiring the right people. I'm very passionate also with working with younger people. We have teenage volunteers at the hospital. I tell them, they have the whole world in their hands, because they do. So we need teachers, and we need people to help mentor our young, and make sure they know you need to attend school, you need to be in class. This is not a place where you can just go and pretend that things are not happening around you, or just taking life through the days and hoping to graduate. Every day is a journey. So we thank you for all you're doing. We want you to help us. And we're here to help with anything you could possibly need. So ask us, and know that we're passionate and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Seth? Thank you. I am Seth Hammitt. I've never sat where you all are sitting, but I have been in politics. So I understand some of the things you are confronted with on a daily basis. Appreciate your service. Start with that. I'm here today as a member of the Workforce Council to represent the electrical energy sector. I'm the chairman of the Energy Institute of Alabama, which consists of the Tennessee Valley Authority, Alabama- Valley Authority, Alabama Power Company, Power South Energy, Alabama Rural Electric Association, Electric Cities of Alabama, and Alabama Municipal Electric Authority. Collectively, we keep the lights on. We have employed in these companies I just mentioned, thousands of people. Most of them work in either power plants where electricity is generated, they work in the transmission system, these large lines you see leaving the power plants, going across country to substations. They keep those running, they keep the substations themselves operational, and they take from the substation to a business or a home through the distribution system, the lines that provide the electricity keep the lights on in homes and businesses. Now, the first thing I would say to you is, these people work in teams. So you can't not show up. People do get sick, they have reasons to be off, but they've got to contact your supervisor and say, I can't be there, so you can get somebody else, because we have to have a team to work together to keep the lights going. Second thing I would say to you is, this is dangerous work. A lot of people get hurt. We've had four people get killed in the last fifteen months working in these sectors I'm talking about. Safety is just preached all the time to these people, safety first, always, safety first. But you depend on your team members to keep you safe. If they're not safe, you're not safe. So that has to be a part of that sermon that we continue to preach to these folks. Now for us to employ people to do this work, they have to have a good ability to read, they have to have a pretty good ability to do mathematics, and they have to have a basic understanding of physics. If they can't do these things, they can't work for us. And what I would say to you today is, it's been my experience, that most people, including children in schools, will try to achieve the expectation that you set for them. Not everybody will do that, but the vast majority will. So what we'd ask you to do here today is set the expectation high enough that we can hire people to work for us to keep the lights on. Thank you.
Mr. Casey Pan.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Casey Pan, I'm with GD Copper USA. I came to this country from Malaysia forty-two years ago, young, good-looking. Spent twenty-five years in Alabama. I was a graduate of UAB. So when I got my MBA from UAB, I went to California and did summer studies, spent some time with finance and holidaying, and then I taught at UAB, international business and management. So seven years ago, I decided to retire from UAB. Then Governor, Governor Ben, they asked me, you're too young to retire. I said, Governor, I'm too, I'm tired of being a poor professor. I say, because you didn't pay me good enough. I already told him that. So educators are not being paid good enough, Dr. Mackey, I want you to know that. So I joined GD Copper some years ago. We need four hundred workers. Today we have two hundred and thirty. And for the first ten months of this year, we turned down millions of dollars of business. I'm not at liberty to tell you how much, but I can tell you it's eight figures. So, and because we turned the business down, because we have no workers, those businesses went to factories, our competitors in South Carolina, in Oklahoma, in Tennessee, and our state lost the tax money, lost a million dollars of economic impact in our region, which is Wilcox County, Clark County, the Black Bell area. So when I taught at UAB, I tell a story. I taught senior classes. Every student in my class, they are seniors, last semester before they can graduate, and then also MBA students. One, in the year 08, I had forty-two students in my class, I asked them, I said, who can name me the top five industries that draw, that drive Alabama's economy? Only two could tell me three industry. That's it. Then I asked them, I said, who can tell me the two finalists of American Idol? Everybody knows. And I told myself, that is bad. That is really bad. And as I said, I came from Malaysia, and I taught a lot of young people, and I found two very common traits. One is the level of responsibility is a lot lower than the level of entitlement. Everybody wants me to, hey professor, can you curve? They want me to curve so that they can get A or B or pass. So I said, no, right, either, you know, we have to fix a problem instead of playing with the numbers. So those are important. And I told myself, you know, if they are in college and then they have the mentality of being irresponsible and entitlement, and then they cannot name the top industry, and I said, it has to be, they are the byproducts of the K-12 system. They have to go through K-12 before they can go to college. I know we train students on the technical skill, career tech program, it's great, math and science, all those things, but I think we do not teach them enough on soft skill, on being responsible, come to work. The first ten months, my company hired two hundred new workers. Hundred and seventy are gone. Hundred and seventy are gone over two hundred that we hired for the first ten months. And then ninety percent of those were gone during the first thirty days. No call, no show. They didn't come to work, they didn't even call, they didn't even care. That is a challenge we have in the industry. So I think we can do a lot better. I have been here twenty-five years. I'm, you know, to me, Alabama is my home, I'm an Alabama citizen, I love Alabama, my wife is from Alabama, and I think we can do better. I think with a collaboration between educators, school board members, teachers, industry leaders, I think we can move from bottom to maybe number forty-five and forty and thirty and twenty, and maybe one day we can be the top ten. I think we can. I've been in Alabama, and, you know, I told Allen that, you know what, I'm gonna just live here and die here. This is my home, and I do love Alabama. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Mr. Phil Will, please.
Okay, well, I did not come from, as far as Mr. Casey did, Malaysia. I came from Heflin, Alabama. Sorry for. And when I had hair just a few weeks ago, I looked better than you. I know you said you were good. It was just a few weeks ago. Okay. First of all, thank all of you. Eric, I know many in this room, and I want to say this truthfully, everyone in this room, way smarter than I am. Everyone in this room is way smarter than I am. Let me tell you a little history. Our little hardware store in Heflin was started by my grandfather seventy-five years ago this year. It was a feed and seed store, a farmer's supply company. And my dad joined when he graduated from Cleburne County in fifty-four. He joined, still the little feed and seed store. So I was born and went to Cleburne County Elementary School, just like my family, just like my younger brother who's no longer living. It wasn't these ladies' fault. I had first, second, third grade teacher in Heflin that was on up in age, and their ways were set, and it was not about teaching. When I got to the fourth grade, I had Miss Betty Lee. That was my mom and dad's close friends. They live right across the railroad track from where our store is today. I'll be there tonight. They said, uh-oh, Miss Lee says, Bobby Eleanor, I can tell every student that comes in my fourth grade class that had the first, second, and third grade teacher that Phil had. I didn't know how to add. We were multiplying and dividing in the fourth grade. I didn't know how to add, didn't know how to subtract. Still do it by my fingers. My banker and accountant says I do that, but I do. So my mom, thankfully, taught me a lot at home. She taught me. Okay. Fast forward that, when I got into high school in Cleburne County, seventh through twelfth, I was blessed. I had fantastic teachers, female and male, awesome. A lot of them are still living. They come in our store and I see them. I was always going to college. My dad and mom said, you go to college, told my brother, you go to college. When you get out, we're gonna close this little business down, we're gonna retire. I'm sitting in high school saying, I want a challenge, because I had good parents and grandparents, like probably everyone in this room. I want to get out in the world and work because of those seventh through twelfth grade teachers, they instill that in me and my parents. I had an opportunity and I did that. I did that. We know the world is different now because of lack of parents. Parenting has changed. You know, our parents, your parents, grandparents, hey, you were at work. I worked when I was eleven years old and my brother at the little hardware store every time school was out. There was no spring break, fall break didn't exist, summer, but I loved it, fell in love with it. I wish I, I wish they were living today where I could thank them, giving me that opportunity. Okay? Now, this is important, what you're doing, what you're doing and the position you're doing, you're being those parents and grandparents by getting those teachers that I had in the fourth grade and fifth and sixth and through high school. You're responsible for that, and you've done a very good job. You, we're gonna do better. We're gonna do better. No matter what goes on in our nation, this is the greatest nation in the world, the United States of America. No matter what all has changed, what will change and happen tomorrow, next week, this is the United States of America, and dead gum that we live in a wonderful state, the state of Alabama. And we've got freedom, and we've got education, and it's not only on y'all's shoulders. I've got a hundred and ninety-five employees. I've been very fortunate to grow my business. I need twenty-five more. I can't find them. Some of them, I never would have thought this, can't fill out an application, cannot fill out an application. Maybe they didn't have parents, grandparents, maybe they didn't have those teachers that I had at Cleburne County. Maybe they had all my first, second, and third grade teachers, I don't know. But I'm just telling you, thank you, and we're gonna do better. And we're here, we're here as industry, as retail trade, because we love this state, we love this nation, and education is important to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. You can see how blessed we ought to have people like this on our board. They will tell you the same thing that I'm thinking now, is it to get us, get K-12 to rise up, it's on y'all, period. Do it. I know you can do it, and you have to. Mr. Chairman?
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you, and thank all of y'all for your great comments. As you can see, we've got a lot of passion in our group, and I think we've got thirty more behind us and employees behind them in each, each company, because they don't, they don't tolerate, you know, anything poor, because they're all successful in what they do. And all we're asking is, we want to work with y'all to improve our educational output, and we understand, you can't, everything, and I'm an engineer from background, so I think in processes. You've got raw material, then you've got a production process, you've got a final product. Y'all didn't create your raw material, you're, y'all, and I'm saying, y'all is the education.
All y'all.
Y'all are y'all, and us. So we've got, it's like I think Phil and mentioned, is, the world has changed, you know, we have different parenting styles, we have different, we have a lot of issues, but that's, we're just still, that's the material we're hitting, we gotta do the best we can with it. And Allen pointed this out, is tolerating poor performance is just not acceptable. And it just drives me crazy, particularly because of Phil back here, he and I support different college football teams. But anyway, I know that his coach and my coach do not tolerate poor performance, and this state is crazy about our sports, and I am too. But how can we tolerate poor performance in our students when we can't tolerate it in sports? We just want, we fire people, you know, for having, you know, what a lot of states would consider terrific seasons, but, you know, the NAEP scores that we have on reading and mathematics just are not acceptable, and we're here to offer our help. We're not educational experts, but we, we do know how to run businesses, we do know what it takes to keep employees. We want a better pool, better pool of raw material to draw from. And it's a, it's an Alabama problem, it's a national, national problem, but this is our state. So we want to make a better state of what we've got. So Dr. Knight, I want to thank you for the time you allowed us to have today. Our board members, thank y'all very much. Everyone of these folks here are available twenty-four seven. If you don't have a number, that guy over there got all of our numbers, Nick Moore. We work closely with Nick. And Nick, I can't remember, Phil, you wanted to say everybody, you're smarter than you. And I'm with you, everyone. And you are probably bumping the bottom. I always tell Nick that if he can make what he's writing on a level that I can understand it, then it'll be good, because everybody else can understand it. But Nick does a great job. And we appreciate, and unfortunately Governor's not here, but certainly appreciate the effort she's put in, and she's passionate about education. We're all passionate about education. So thank you again.
Thank y'all. I appreciate you coming down. And Dr. Hall also goes, he goes to all the Workforce Council meetings. I try to go at least, Tim said, the state superintendent's an ex-official member, I try to go at least one a year in some of the committee meetings. Dr. Hall goes there all, to all the meetings, so we appreciate y'all. Welcome to stay with us.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Watch that car.
Thank you. Safe travel.
Thank you again. See you soon. Okay, where does that range? Board member questions? Y'all want any coffee first or something, or?
We've got ten months.
That's the fact.
Oh, that's right.
I know, I know, and y'all got through early, didn't you?
No, we didn't.
I watched the tape. I watched the tape, every bloody minute of it. So yes, y'all, y'all work extremely hard, and I'm very thankful.
Now, this is a side thing, I will ask her, you keep going. Okay. We don't have to be that hard.
Okay.
I'm ready, I'm good.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, as you know, today we voted on the cut score. Okay. So that is, and each of you received what I call a clean copy, and I'm sorry that Jason wasn't here, he's the one that got it, of the literacy act. Well, I'm sure y'all have done exactly what I've done, is I've gone through it multiple, multiple times, and every time I read it, there's more, it's the most, stuff is embedded in this law more than anything. But what I've gone through, and I'm sure all of you have done the same thing, and highlighted our responsibilities from the state board, of which one of them is the ones we could just check off. Well, as you, as you may or may not know, I think it was last Thursday, the grade level change, the grade level committee, subcommittee, and the literacy task force came together with some recommendations about the literacy act and, and things that we need to do. I think what we need to do is to remember, even though we might have particular responsibilities that we must check off and do because of the law. But what I've gone through, and I'm sure all of you have done the same thing, and highlighted our responsibilities from the state board of which one of them is the ones we could just check off. Well, as you, as you may or may not know, I think it was last Thursday, the grade level, the grade level committee, subcommittee and the literacy task force came together with some recommendations about the literacy act and, and things that we need to do. I think what we need to do is to remember, even though we might have particular responsibilities that we must check off and do because of the law. I think we need to take more and having heard the business, the workforce people speak. We need to take a greater ownership of it. I think we need, I've heard, I'm sure if I receive complaints and, and concerns, y'all receive complaints and concern. We need to put our ears to the ground, we need to be finding out what it is and how we can help roll out this, this literacy act, which has some fundamentally fabulous things in it. The, the science of reading, I truly believe from the bottom of my heart, because we taught it in the schools. We saw the great results. We saw them back in whatever year it was, 2009, but that is a wonderful opportunity, but we've got to help with the rolling out. We have to help with the intense professional development. And the article about which I read from Rehoba, they were talking about everything about which the law speaks, but it gives you different variables about how to implement it. I guess what I'm saying is, and hearing the concerns and we all have it weighing heavily on our hearts, that we need to roll out this law to fidelity, but we have to be part of the conversation. We can't just do our, I'm not gonna say miniscule part, but you know, we have to check off the things that we must do. But I still think we need to be viewing it, asking ourselves, how's it going? How's the progress going? How can we help? And then in turn, think about, what are we going to do about math? And we, I hear it all the time, we gotta do something about math, we gotta do as much for math as we are for reading. What's the plan? We need a plan, we need to put it to fidelity, we need a timeline and we need to get started like yesterday. That's my soapbox of the day. It wasn't a question, it was just a concern because we're at a crucial point in it and we cannot afford to lose one more generation of kids. We just can't. I won't allow it.
And especially when we voted today with the delay for the year, so now we really have to look at where we are, yes.
That is a legislative, is that not?
You only voted on the cuts.
Only the cuts.
The governor said she's gonna recommend to the legislature.
Right, but that is not our.
It is not passed, so we still don't know.
You can get in, you can certainly weigh in on that.
Correct, and I do.
But it's not, it's not something the board.
Right. But again, there are so many good things in the law, but again, as you read it and read it and read it more, things pop up. But we need to be as well aware of, and I saw this in the past from when I was at the schools where I'd have people walking through my school and they'd do their little, you know, viewing and open the door thing. Hi, hi, everybody. We need to be looking at what is going on. How are they teaching? Are they actually implementing it? Are they using the science of reading? Are they doing the professional training? Where are we and how can we help? Okay, soapbox number two.
I would have, I would have liked if they'd asked a chance to question, Tim O'Carroll used to be in my district, was in Gadsden. The opinion of the workforce council on the delay and the implementation rate of the literacy act and laws regarding mathematics. Because they all emphasize the fact that they're not getting a quality product. We know the unemployment rate in Alabama is, is moderate to low. The area that I live in is very desperate for employees. And we are providing them. And they're correct. And so I was, would have asked them, and I'd like Nick, see them have input into the legislature about delay and, you know, the legislature did a great job in the literacy act. And I've done not as in-depth and not as intelligently as Ms. Ziegler has reviewing it. But I, the term you use fidelity is a, is a very dramatic word. Fidelity means carrying out your commitment, your integrity and infidelity. And I don't know what pushing things down the road will make a difference in finally producing a product. You delay, and you delay, and you delay. You just don't do. You don't do. And the testimony I heard about not being able to get children that can fill out a form or add and subtract, multiply and divide is concerning to me because we live, I live in an environment where the industry is growing. People are moving in and they can't staff at minimal level. And I find that testimony across the state. I would like to see the business council, the workforce council have input on implementation of the laws and the effect the delay has on the product they'll receive. Because we keep delaying, the competency level at third grade was delayed in sixth grade and, and I don't know where we're going. And that's why I'd like to see some specific input from the workforce council on the things that Ms. Ziegler brought, on the legislature, legislative act, legislative act and/or literacy, legislative actions on the mathematics teaching and implementation of that. Because we're not going, they said 40, now we're 52nd. And you keep delaying, you know, all, some of us came from families where our parents didn't let us not attend school. I don't know where we're going, but I'd like to see the workforce council, in addition to telling us what the problem is, some specific actions. Does that make sense, Nick? I'll direct that to you.
On whether they, yeah, their input on whether to delay or not.
Yes. And how much delay and, and what to do because they have more, they have more influence on the legislature than we do. Now, I mean, I've known Seth Hamm for a long time and I know the input that the governor has and they should have on the government. And you work with them directly and I'm pleased to know that because I think you do a good job representing us, Nick Moore.
I like what they said about that we have the raw material that we're given, be it how they're ready. And I always said that when my kidlets came over that threshold of school, they were mine from eight until three when I sent them back. And I had no control truly over what happened outside, but I had control when those kidlets were in my building. And we got to do the same thing. We cannot be, there's probably, these are things that are manageable. Why are we not checking these off and making sure that these are getting into the counselor's hands in the high school? And really, they need to be starting in elementary. You know, you teach it by modeling, let them, I hate to tell you, there's probably some adults that need some of these that are done. What can we do to keep moving forward instead of lamenting about what we, what has happened? How are we gonna move it forward? Sorry.
Yes.
Are there any assurances within maybe an implementation plan of meeting the requirements for the literacy law? I think I mentioned last time we were together, how can we ensure that the support that's been mandated, those supports are being implemented to fidelity?
Correct.
And in addition to the supports, will these support systems be aligned with the needs based on the data that we have? And so I believe that every child deserves an opportunity, but you have some children that may need a little bit more assistance. You have some school districts that need additional assistance. You have some school systems that are begging for just elementary teachers in the classroom. You know, wanting to provide intervention, wanting to provide additional reading specialists, but just can't find a warm body to come to certain geographical areas. But my concern is whether or not there is a plan to ensure that those schools that have the greatest needs are provided the greatest support.
So it sounds like what y'all want is I think of kind of going back and update of what we did probably two years ago to start the literacy act. Where we laid out all that plan because yes, there, there are three tiers of schools. The lowest tier, the lowest performing tier get the most support. That's the, that's how we do it through ARI. So 53 schools get a dedicated state coach. Then the next tier, they get, it's a coach per so many schools, but it's not one to one. And then the highest tier gets the least support. What we hear, and one of the things we've been talking about is that that, that lowest tier is 5%. And then the next tier is 5 to 40%. And if we probably need a fourth tier, that would be like 6% to 20.
Yes.
That they would get more support. Now, that would take legislation, so that's, and more money, obviously, because we'd have to hire more support people to go out. But I think maybe next, maybe next month work session, we could bring that and just update where we are with ARI. But yeah, even, even when districts get money to hire people, reading coaches, there are assurances, yes, they have to, how much time they have to spend with teachers, what they do. There's a very specific job description, which was not true 20 years ago with ARI. But all of that now is, in fact, it's interesting to hear y'all because one of the biggest complaints we get is that we, is that the accountability on local districts is too high. Because we, we, we send down strict accountability to the local school. I mean, that is the chief complaint that we hear is that it is too much work on teachers because they're having to ensure that they're doing all this work, which is more paperwork for teachers than they've ever done before. All the scripts, the, the reading plans they have to do. So I would say the chief complaint we get from the school districts is that we have overdone the accountability part from the department. But what I hear from y'all is no, you want us in those schools making sure. But now teachers, you go talk to some reading teachers. I talked to superintendents, three in the last month, who said that they're afraid all their third grade teachers are gonna quit and just go to other grades, they'll go to fourth or fifth grade because we are requiring so much. So I think what we need to do is, is come in and show you what we are requiring, what all that plan is. Of course, the math plan is very clear. We can come back, also, I can get Dr. Ledwell and Dr. Davis to work on that. But you know, the, the basis was to get standards aligned tonight, which I was appreciative, Alan saying, first time in the state's history, 2019, we adopted standards aligned tonight, that's good. The next thing is to adopt textbooks aligned to those standards. This fall is the first time those textbooks are being used in classrooms. Math coaches in elementary schools, which we've asked for multiple times from the legislature, also recommended by the governor's STEM council, but we haven't gotten that. So in place of that, as you know, we did the TIR, we used our federal money to do a pilot to at least show the legislature what math coaches could look like in schools. The rolling out the AMSTI training, the numbers training and OGAF training, three levels of support we talked about last month. But it may be that y'all want to see all of that in one, one work session presentation and, and we'd be glad to do that.
And Dr. Mackey, will the, the schools, we've got new A-CAP scores. And I think, and, and something that may have been in the video I watched, that some of our, our lowest performing schools actually did pretty well. So they may not be in the lowest 5% anymore. So are we gonna get a renewed list?
Well, not now because the feds have frozen that.
Well, but internally, because, you know, feds have their thing, but we need to support those schools that have the greatest need, right? Wherever they are, you know, whatever. And so, and, and I fully agree with you that I would love to support up to 25%,
Right.
you know, of, of the lowest ones and give them, treat them just like we do our full support schools. So I would love to do that. And, and like with reading, have it that make, I don't know if you could make it mandatory, I don't know if that is the right way to do it. But highly encourage that all those that scored low in reading are letters trained.
Oh, absolutely.
Are in, are either in it or have completed, and the administrators too. And even have a, a national letters trainer come and work with them and, and monitor and help them and guide them and counsel with them. And, and another thing, and this was one of the, we do read what you send us. One of the comments.
I'm glad I know.
But one of the comments made, I have no idea who made this comment, but one of the comments made in, when you had polled, you know, the different groups, was that all other components and supports provided by the literacy act, such as before and after school tutoring, intervention, summer camp should remain in full effect for those students who would otherwise been retained. Right. So those fourth graders who really aren't ready for, assuming this goes through, that it's a delay for one year. We don't know that, but if it does, that those fourth graders who really aren't reading on grade level, and we know they're not reading on grade level, we have to provide support for them, right? We've already, we've got data that shows they're not reading on grade level and the way, I think right now, it cuts off.
That's right.
At third grade. And so what's gonna happen to these fourth graders? Who can't read?
By law, legislature, so.
But also is it not true that even if they say delay it, a child can still be retained?
Sure.
Oh, sure. But we've got to get that word out. If, if this kid cannot be passed on regardless of what the law is, it is our responsibility to hold that child back and get him what he needs.
And then can we also consider that the assessment, the reading part of the A-CAP? Not the whole A-CAP, not the full blown, but just the reading part, just like we've talked about with ACT. The more times you take it, the more comfortable you get and you're also measuring the progress of that student. Could they take that multiple times? Why do they just have to take it one time? Right? I mean, maybe they, maybe it was a bad day, you know, for that child and maybe they really can read, but we didn't capture it on that day. Is there a way just to do the reading component, which is what determines, you know, their reading score?
I'm gonna say no. It's just not, because the way that test is designed, you couldn't do that. Similar to ACT, of course, I know that it's offered six times a year, but you, it's, it's complicated to do it six times a year. That's where the portfolio comes in. So let's say a child just scores low. They ought to have those, the formative test data from the three assessments they've done. And in time, as we fully implement, they'll have test data from third grade, they ought to have their test data from second grade, they ought to have their reading samples and all the things that are in that portfolio. And that's where that piece comes in. And, and remember that the reason you adopted 452 is that that is not the recommended cut score. And I know you missed this discussion, we got, well, I know you watched it, but last month. The recommended cut score was actually 474 or something.
34.
452 is two standard measures, yeah, two standard measures measured below the recommended, real true recommended cut. And that's so that you'd have 96%, not a guarantee, I almost said the word guarantee, but you'd have the confidence, 96% confidence that the children who really scored below 452 really are below. Now, it's true that let's say a child had a terrible situation at home the night before and they, they just really did poorly on the test. But that's where, I mean, if the teacher, if I've been teaching this child all year long and I know that, that Eric has, you know, he really is a good reader, but he scored really low on that test, that's where I kick it to, the portfolio. And say, look, I know this child reads better than that. And then, of course, there's the second chance test in the summer. So I don't, I mean, this year, obviously, I, I do believe they ought to delay a year because I think that it's just the pandemic has caused chaos in the schools. And I know y'all talk to school people, I mean, they just, they, they, I don't think it's a lack of our teachers caring or working hard. They are absolutely overwhelmed. They're overwhelmed. And so I think delaying a year is, is a good idea and we certainly all debate that, none of us gets to decide anyway, but, but. As far as students reading, you've got, obviously, you've got, you've got to be focusing on those students that you know are behind. So those students who scored below 452 last year, the districts are generating, they'll be generating those reports within days now. And my suspicion is 90% of our schools, they've not waited till they get the report and figure out, they already are working on getting those students caught up.
And Dr. Mackey, the interventions that we do, I know you sent out a memo, you know, and I think it had six maybe different interventions on it. I, there's an approval somewhere.
The interventions are the. The interventions are the the assessments, six assessments.
Okay, well, maybe it was more, okay, the assessments, and I'll just go with intervention too. Um, how do we know that they are used, is there assurance, like, do they have to turn in a report saying which one they're using?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And and more than that, how their students performed on it, I mean, they're very detailed reporting, which is why hence, our biggest complaint from superintendents and pre- principals is that we're requiring too much paperwork on teachers.
But if you don't document it, and any good teacher knows documentation and doing anecdotal records and maintaining constant uh determining how they're moving forward, what are their weakened points, and so when they finally take the A-CAP, there shouldn't be a surprise.
Absolutely.
Should not be a surprise, you know, who's really been floundering, you're hoping that all the interventions you have done, that they will have solved that problem, and there'll be, it should be a low percentage that actually has to go into what we call summer camp or whatever. Or Billy, who, and I'll go with the male, who just was a great reader, but does it does not know how to take a test. And those are very small in number, but it's a reality. But if we implement everything that as good teachers, we know with the understanding of the science of reading, I just feel we are just going to be cooking with gas and moving forward.
Yeah.
And and be it May, you've got to document.
I think, I think you'll see this, I think you'll see them go up this year.
I do too. But if you don't document it, it doesn't happen.
We do have, sorry, I'll come back. I just want to go back to Dr. Chestnut's comment, so we'll, and we will, we'll pull together a full presentation, you'll you'll love it. Y'all, they can go so deep in the data, I'll glaze over again, Dr. Reynolds, but.
Pardon?
I said, I'll glaze over again, but uh with this, all this data, but back to Dr. Chestnut's point. We, so one of the things that that Tim and I and Phil Webb, Phil's such a great friend from back in my days in Jacksonville, and they, we talk about these things, they're having a labor shortage, we are having a labor shortage. And and there are places, I mean, we have principals that just cannot hire teachers. We have, you know, we, uh, Ms. West, in your area, I don't think Randy Wilks would mind me using, Phoenix City, he had sixty teachers this year that are not fully certified. They're either on an alternate certificate, or they've got a sub certificate while they're working on something. He has sixty teachers that are not certified. Now, that's a district that is high paying, they attract dozens of teachers from Georgia, from across the river, who retire over there and come over. They have liter-, I mean, I don't, scores of teachers who are tied to military, so they're here because their spouse works at Fort Benning, and they are still sixty teachers short. Um, so and and I mean, that's a, that's a crisis everybody's trying to work on, but like if if I'm in a county where I can, rural county, I look at Dr. Chestnut, because some of her counties, I mean, you can hire a good principal, you can spend a million dollars on products, but if you can't put a third grade teacher in the classroom, we, you know, those, it's short. And uh we've got counties, even with the TEAMS Act, we still have some counties that don't have a certified math teacher in the county. So there is a labor shortage also, and we're, we got to, I just don't want, I've, I mean, thirty years of this, and there's a lot going on, and we're pushing harder, I know we're pushing harder on teachers now than we ever have, but I've also never seen teachers so discouraged. The the pandemic has taken the wind out of their sails. Thirty percent, you have to remember, thirty percent of our teachers can walk out the door at Christmas with their retirement and never come back. And we're hearing more and more that by May, and so we've got to also encourage, and y'all are encouraging people, we got to, yes, yes, hold people accountable, but also we have to encourage people, we've got to, we've got to.
And offer how support.
Because this is not just a third grade teacher problem. We can't put the accountability just on a third grade teacher. We've got to provide them with the level of support that we would want, most of us as educators. And that's my concern, like you said, a lot of them are dodging teaching that grade level. But I'm hoping that we can be intentional in providing support to the point that they feel that this is not a burden or load that they have to carry alone. So when I say support, how can we assist them, how can we help them, let them know? And first of all, we acknowledge that this is an area of concern, but this is how we're going to help you overcome those challenges.
And even when you say third grade, the foundation began with CAFYAM two. Thanks, I mean, we're supporting all of them.
That's correct.
Okay, yes, Ms. West.
I know we have a really robust plan um that we're rolling out, I mean, I know that you have a plan. I last, I think at the last meeting, I had asked about, once we had our scores in, would we be able to see a report that shows us exactly where our weak students are right now today? Um, by LEA? I I don't, I think the whole board would like to see, like, school system, I don't have to have a name, I can have a number in a district and a number of students and where, and I know we got the percentages last month, and I went back through that, and I looked at it in detail. I'm just wondering if we could go just a little bit deeper, so I have a better understanding of where the five percent and below is, the six to twenty.
Twenty.
The twenty-one to, am I making sense? Like I, I just, with seven hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight students, uh, and this number in that band of K through three, I just feel like to understand more deeply our challenge, I need to see where they are. Does that make sense?
We can do that, and I, we'll show you the, we'll also pull back up those maps um, you know, and update them. But for instance, remember that with the reading specialist, they go to, and I also confused something.
And that was it.
We OSI, we have OSI, so school improvement is dictated by federal rules, that uh what we do with our reading is not the same. So our, where our reading specialists go, but they're largely overlap. But for instance, there are more read, state reading specialists assigned to Birmingham City than to all of, I know Dr. McCray's her whole district, because that's where the needs are.
Sure.
So they go where the the needs are. Now, remember, that this is the first time, the with the Literacy Act and our implementation of it, this is the first time in state history that we have put more resources where there's more need, because the the theory has always been, everybody gets the same, no matter what. So for the first time, we we got over that, and I make in every presentation to legislators, I, when I would show them the map, because that's the first thing, you mean my, I'm getting nothing in my district? No, you're not, because as a collective body, all of the legislature together decided we're going to put our resources where our needs are greatest. And I think if you'll, we show you some of those things again, updated, plus the report.
That last column with how many specialists they have?
Yes.
Yes.
I need, I, I need to know how many students are below where they need to be and how many resources we've placed there. And then where are the gaps, where are the holes, where can we not hire? You know, and I think today, this conversation between business and education, there is just a total disconnect, I think, at the district level in the districts feeling responsible for providing employees. No, they're responsible for providing a free and appropriate public educl- education. We have to provide that at a level with some character development that creates employees, but it, we can't say to the superintendent, it's your job to provide employees to industry, I mean, we, that's a disconnect in communication, in my opinion, that I don't know that school people have that.
Mindset.
Mindset, you know, they work under a different set of rules. Um, so, you know, I I don't know how we help them understand that that's the expectation of industry. That's what they expect. Um, and so, you know, I I understand the working together piece, but but I don't see how that's really happening outside our career coaches and our regional people.
Can we add another column?
Yes, ma'am.
Elizabeth?
Getting ready. I'm writing it all in. Portrait.
I would love to see the summer programs that were used in each one of the districts, because that's going to give us some indication of which program were more effective than others.
Those reports are due um December.
So.
November. Because we have to.
November twenty-four.
So it's a huge report with most of the information y'all have asked for, that the districts have to get to us, and then we have to, we turn it around and give it to y'all in the legislature in December. So let's, I think you'll see a lot of this information will bear out in there, now, it's gonna, it's it's a lot too, so probably coming back and breaking it down in a presentation would also be useful.
And then a way to close the loop, once we find the summer programs that had the highest productivity and effectiveness, then sharing that with our schools and saying, look, this one, you know, seemed to work really well, let's take out the best components of it and then share it, and then this one didn't work so well, you know, so perhaps we would want to avoid that one. But I've got a question, and Dr. West, this is that memo that you had, um, um, have the letters for those people who demonstrated mastery with letters, have those stipend checks gone out?
They are, they have a memo that we put.
A memorandum has been completed, and it's in routing process, and so the memorandum should be sent any day now.
But that, that's what they, they'll do the same type of what we did for national boards where they, so as soon as that memo is, because it was a brand new memo.
And it doesn't have to go through as many steps as the CULT did, because we have access to see who has mastery. We don't have to go to another organization to find it, so it'll be quicker than what the CULT process did.
And what about the certification portal? We were going to recognize them on the certification portal as being letters masters?
What it, and I know Siobhan helped us with that, it's on, it's in the portal, yeah, it will be on the portal uh and even more accessible than it is at present when uh, Martin is working to expedite this implementation of the portal, there've been few uh legislation system, but it will be accessible to the public through the portal.
Do you think that this will be done, the checks sent out and the portal completed by Christmas?
Probably, yes.
Well, let's, yeah, let's wait, we may need to get Andy to talk about the checks, because what happens, we don't pay teachers. We just, you know, we transfer money to the district, so so for instance.
Like NBCTs, we send the money and then they always want their money before Christmas, so.
And some districts, and some districts pay before we even send them the money, because they just, they pay it, and then they, we get the money back, most districts do, but some won't do that. It goes into, just realize the way our system works is that they get a transfer of money once a month, a lot of money, millions of dollars, every system does, and in that is all their salaries, their OCE, these, I mean, all of this is put in, so it's not like it goes as a separate, we write checks out, now, the teachers see it in their checks. I just want to say, we need to get, I know Andy was listening, so we were talking at lunch, but as to when those will be included in the, that monthly allocation, you know, y'all get a, you get copied on that, I think, when the, they're, they can expect the money in their account on, it's always the last two or three days of the month. Most districts, like they'll go, they don't necessarily wait on that distribution, but I don't know when that will happen. You were about to say something.
Yes, I was just going to speak on the portal. Um, we are working, the certification team is working with Alabama Supercomputer to actually design that online portal. Um, what we have done is we prioritize um the highest level of certificates that will be able to be completed in there, we're looking at the top five, and these are the most highly used certificates. And the reason we were wanting to do it in that method, we could actually make certain all of the other features in there actually work with those certificates, and if Siobhan needs to go back at that point and make tweaks, she can. One of the items that we have identified with our IT division, as well as Supercomputer, is to have that particular letters flag included in that portal. So those are all, we actually have a meeting set up for Tuesday of next week with both vendors, so we're working to make certain we at least have that portion of our portal active by the end of the month. And we're working hard to get that done. We've met a few challenges with it, but we're real, the teams are very excited. As we're going through the process, we're constantly finding something we want to add or to change with the scope of work, because there are some things that we didn't think of from the beginning when we developed that scope of work. But Siobhan, I mean, she doesn't sleep at night, she's working constantly, she'll send me a text, what do you think about this? We have screenshots, so we're working to get those, but we're going to target the highest five used applications with our first rollout.
Well, the teachers will be so excited.
Well, Siobhan is going to be.
They're worried.
And you know, we're, we've even pushed her piece off to make certain we have more of what the teachers need, because there was an admin function that we added, which is merely for Siobhan and her team to be able to go in there, pull data just like this, and to create those reports to show when people ask us, how many certificates do we have in computer science? So we're adding those features in there for her, but we've pushed those off to the end so that we could make certain we have what the applicant will really need to use in this product.
Thank you.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
You know, I'm a strong believer in local control of education, and inherent with that is local responsibility. I demanded that when I was a superintendent, and I hear su- local school systems who are now funded better than we were when you and I were superintendents complaining about accountability reports is disconcerting to me. And I know that we're making progress in language arts, but as Dr. Zig, as Ms. Ziegler said, and as this committee says, mathematics and the soft skills are equally important. And I, you know, you made an anecdotal reference to somebody who, superintendent who raised a concern to you, and you asked him how he was using his S-ur monies, and he was not using the monies that way. And I know from my perspective of having been in educational leadership, money becomes important. And that influx of a lot of money, just like in our personal accounts, you gave me a lot, I've spent it not as wide as these, if you give me a little bit of time, but I'm concerned how directive we are from the state level, given the right of local control, and how the S-ur, S-ur three monies are spent. Because when you look at those monies, as Dr. Chestnut referenced, it's not an equal distribution. There's a wide variance in how much money various school systems gives based on some needs assessment, right? How directive are we or can we be, given the data that we're getting and the delays that we're getting, that this money is being used to solve the problems we have in math and language arts? Because if the money is just flowing to school systems without a tag on how it's tied to data, and I'm kind of a data person, you know, I get, but I know collectively they like, how are we dealing with that? Are we really being directive, or are we allowed to be? Because if there are deficiencies that exist in school systems, and they're getting a large amount, millions of dollars in some systems, or tens of millions of dollars, to using that money to deal with the problems that we identify at the State Board of Education level, can we set priorities or are we setting priorities? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, so that's a mixed bag, because Congress said the state cannot direct schools on how to spend. We're, we're giving this money to school districts, and states cannot tell schools how to spend it. Congress put that in law.
I know we can't, but if they're not performing, can it be, can we connect performance? The money goes to them, and then they tell us they can't do the math, they can't do the language arts, they can't do the soft skills. You know, then what are our expectations? You know, then what are our expectation or the federal government's expectation? Because it's our tax money.
So the, the state set aside money, which we are passing all of our state set aside money, almost all of it, except for a very little overhead to schools, that we can dictate. So for instance, we have said we are going to use state set aside money for, to pay for summer school for literacy, for three summers. And they can only get the money if they agree to do that in accordance with the Literacy Act.
Can they have to match that money that we give them? Can?
No, we can't make them do that.
But if they.
But now.
If somebody's getting a million dollars and we're giving them a hundred thousand, can we connect performance to the money they get, even if it's the federal act? I don't think the, the S R act, the monies was ever intended but to be wisely used. And I believe in local control and I don't wanna, as a, as a board member, I have five counties, to tell each of them how to deal with it. But I expect them to perform. And we've seen statewide, nationwide, parents becoming involved, empowering parents to deal with school boards. And us as school board members is a reality that's happening in our state. And perhaps we need to take some steps to empower parents to deal with their local environments that aren't achieving.
So you can, I mean, they have to have an approved plan to spend the money. And there are, Congress laid out which things they can, they can spend the money on. So here's the, and we, and we absolutely advise them and guide them. So let's say that somebody sends in their plan, one of the things they can use their plan for. So Congress also, they laid out a kind of priorities. So first thing is the money is to be spent on the virus. Mitigation of the virus, recovery strategies for the virus because it is COVID money. So, so for instance, they can spend it on upgrading their HVAC systems to show that they have better airflow to lower the spread of the virus in the, in the room. But if they send us a plan and they're gonna spend all of their S R three money on re, you know, upgrading their HVAC systems, we are not just gonna take that. We're gonna go back and are Molly Killensworth and her crew in federal programs, that's what, they're, I mean, they take those, they go through it. Are you sure that you don't need to set aside some money for this and for this and for this? Which is why it has taken so long to approve the plans. They're not just being approved because they put something down. Like they're going through them line by line, working with superintendents. Now, we do get issues where we had one of you talk to a teacher or a principal or somebody, I don't know who, I'll say. But in a county where they said, we won't, you know, we can't, we don't have any money to spend on busing for two. And I talked to the board member and said, that, well, I didn't talk to him, but emailed back, I don't, I will have to check, see, they've got money for that. Don't know if it's in their plan. So Mr. Markham talked to superintendent, superintendent said, no, it's not in our plan. We don't want it in our plan. Like we have a good plan and that's not something anybody's expressed need for. So in that case, what needs to happen, that may be one school that, that does need something. They've gotta talk to that local superintendent about. But now what we've done, we've made the superintendent aware. You, you've got somebody in your school district says they do need that. Here's how we'll help you amend your plan if you want to. But we can't make them amend their plan for that. But I would, I would also, just defending our folks, I mean, they've got some really good things in their plans. They really thought. We've gotten some in that were, that needed help. But the vast majority of them have really worked hard to think about students first. And what do they need to do for tutoring, for after school care? They are, they're busing kids and giving kids supper and all these kind of things out of their money. They are certainly providing summer school opportunities, intermittent camps. So Birmingham City has rearranged their whole school year so they can have these two week windows between quarters to set up camps through the year. I mean, they're, and they, and they had to do a lot of things. And they got some strong pushback from the business community, didn't want them starting school in July, but they, but you know, you gotta, it's a balance in that. You have to work with everybody. But they've done some really good job. So I think that you'd find most, I mean, most of them have really thought through their plans. Now, to be fair, some of them, like we've got some new superintendents that come in, they may have a new federal programs person, a new technology person, and they really, they're starting, they need a lot of help. And in that case, Ms. Killensworth, Dr. Killensworth and her team, they go in and they work with them to develop a good plan. But I think you'll see, they're putting their money where the, where the issue should be. Now, we've gotten a few. I got one this week, this one superintendent who also shall not be named, who said, right now, they just didn't think they could spend all their money.
I know that.
See the year.
And, and they didn't know how to budget all their money three years out because they really, it's a high funded system locally. They have a lot of money. But that, but what happens with that, we have a commitment. Andy Craig, listening above, has a commitment, we are not sending anybody, anybody back to Washington.
No.
So even on the first round of S R money, the first round of S R money in the summer of 2020, we had districts that did not spend their money. We took their money and redistributed it to other districts because we had other districts that were saying, we don't have enough money. And we had some districts that said, we don't need all this money. We're giving some of it back. We redistributed the money. So we'll, and, and I'll tell you, in the summer of 24, in the 23, 24 school year, in the summer of 24, when it, we're down to the line, the money has to be spent by the end of September, there will be a lot of moving money around. Because districts that haven't spent their money, that return it, we will funnel it into the more high need districts that summer. We can't do that yet. We have to wait till we get closer and they return it. But if you talk, as you talk to superintendents, I think you'll see they're really thinking deeply about supporting student learning and using this money wisely. The hard part is, what I hear from many of them, and I think y'all do too, is they, they would like to spend the money on more teachers. And either they cannot find more teachers or they can't find more teachers for two years because then the money will go away. We'll have this funding cliff. I talked to a senator Monday about that. He said, you know, I'm, I'm concerned not about his district spending the money, but that they're gonna get addicted to the money and then it goes away and all of a sudden in three years, they don't have this money. They've built, they've built a whole plan on money that's not gonna be there in three years. And this is a senator, state senator from a very wealthy district, but he was thinking ahead about that.
Yes, Dr. McCarty.
I've got three questions. One is, where are we in the ELA textbook process?
Good question. So that is, those, the committee wraps up their work this month. They will come to you in the December work session for hopefully a vote in January. Now, they are, I think, currently out for the comment period. They may, may not be yet. It may be, that'll be like December 1st, but there's a, you know, there's, there's multiple comment periods. But the last comment period is, I think, has to be, I think, it's 45 days before the January board meeting. But I'm, I may be wrong on my time a little bit, so let me not.
Will you send us, like when they come to our libraries and that sort of thing, will you send us that information so we know where to go?
Until the board adopts, is that right?
Is that right?
I may be wrong about that.
We can send the chart. We can get that together.
The chart.
They get.
Whatever, you know, so once they get to out in public, I'd like to go look at it.
Yeah, okay. We will, we'll do that. We do have them upstairs because Mr. Markham and I spent an hour in there the other day going through second grade books, reading stories.
Yes.
The, so we do have our library here stocked, if you want to look at them. They, we have had, I mean, I don't know now's the time. We've had some concerns issued from school districts about some of, particularly one vendor that I haven't named today. But we're, a lot of concerns about one vendor, which is gonna possibly present a problem for the board. Because you're gonna be painted into a corner. And I'll tell you more as it develops. You could be painted into a corner because you've got the textbook law and what it tells you to do and the literacy act. And they, this is one of those areas where they don't agree with each other. Their two goals are gonna be in conflict. And, and the board's gonna have to make some choices, basically about which one you want to follow and which one not. And.
All right, which one can land us in jail?
There is no decision, no decision you make will land you in jail or get you sued or anything like that.
We're good.
But we have districts that are wanting, that we have, not many, but a few superintendents have figured that out. And they're like, when are we gonna know what the answer's gonna be so we know which direction to go? But.
And Dr. Mackey, well, we get, like we did for the math, you know, how we had that beautiful rubric that showed, you know, it scored them and then it gave us like alignment with standards and all these different categories and then comments. It was so helpful.
Yeah, my understanding is they're doing that now.
Okay.
Because we rebuilt the whole rubric after math.
That, Elizabeth is saying yes. And will we know if it, will it be segregated based on whether it's core instruction or intervention?
Secondary.
Okay, okay. Great. Well, thank you.
You get a better report than we did the first one because we learned from that.
We did.
We'll get a better, they're working on that now. They met last week. I went down and talked to several of them, spent some time with them. And I think that was their last official meeting and they're just now compiling the final report. But yeah, so that's coming at the December work session. And so they'll actually be here as, as we've been used to. Somebody will be here, a couple of people from that committee and they will be presenting those materials. And they've done a really good job, but we are gonna have, we're gonna have a little bit of an issue, I think, that we just have to work through. It's not anything you need to lose sleep over tonight, but, and it's really a discussion for next month for some reason. I'm not trying to get around it. It's just all the facts aren't there yet, but we'll get there. So that process is coming.
That was number one.
Hopefully for, well, wait a minute, wait a minute. You asked great questions and I have to fully answer them though. You know, I'm too long winded. So, so I say for a vote in January because the key is to do that, what you, you, you know the term.
Caravan.
Caravan, the textbook caravan where they all, for, the list to be done. The districts want to, you know, they wanna see it by February 1st. So if we don't vote in January, then it throws everything off on them getting new books next fall. And so that's why we're, we're trying to get it, all, all the, have it in the presentation in December and hopefully the vote in January. But that does mean that it's gonna be kind of, may have to move a lot of pieces around. You know, we may not. Everything may completely fall together. But anytime, I always worry about anything that happens in D A C in January because like my good staff, like Nora Thornton over here, who's just great, and Leanne, they've got day, many days that they, they lose in the year if they don't take off. And I've told them, this year, y'all cannot just throw those days away. Because every year they just work so hard and they show up on days when they really wanna be with families. So we're trying to organize so one of them will be here all the time. But at the same time, it does mean everything moves more slowly during that break. So we'll have to kind of work through that. I just warn you. But it's a good way.
Well, yes, no.
I'll be faster answering the others, I promise.
There will be many people who want to go see those books. So whenever we have a memo, when they're out for public, you know, to view, that'd be great. Okay, I hated to miss last month and miss the D A C, you know, when they presented. But I saw where they had some recommendations, like for funding for travel and for conferences. And then also, what was another one? Oh, the Dyslexia Resource Guide. That if we could, and I don't know how, I don't know, we're our communication people. I don't know the best way to communicate that and get it out into the schools' hands. But whatever we can do to promote that and get that out so that we know how to serve our students with dyslexia, I think that's very powerful and will be much appreciated. And then I keep hearing again about the CULT stipends, anything that we can do to ensure that those stipends go not just for those school teachers who are so important, but also for those who may work in central office or in other areas where they're crafting the curriculum and they're doing the P D and they're doing all this important stuff that, that improves reading, but yet they're not a full-time classroom teacher. And so I just, you know, I'm not sure how that funding piece goes with the, the conferences and the travel. But I, I certainly would support that. I just, I'm not sure how we implement that.
Yeah, I talked to, I had a good conversation with Sonia Yates the day after that. We were at the dyslexia meeting at Fraser Church. Dr. Chestnut was out there. And what, most of them work for districts and the districts pay their travel to like come to Montgomery for meetings and all. She said they only, they have a few parents who are volunteers that don't work for a district, so there's nobody to pay theirs. So we're looking at that. It's probably, we could do something similar to what we do for textbook committees. We pay their travel and, and those kind of things. Though that's, that's in the law. That exists. I mean, by law, we pay textbook committees. So we would, it would be, the only, there's just a little bit of difference because the Dyslexia Advisory Council is not an entity created by law like a textbook group is. So it's, so we have to go back and say, well, which funds can we do? It's not a lot of money, but we're talking through that. So she said that it was probably, it was really not a big deal for most people, but I told them it's something we'd work on for next year. So we're working on that one. The other piece, the CULT, so that starts in the, with this next step. So what y'all proved that we sent over to the legis, to the governor's office, executive budget office actually, is the spreadsheet, the dollars. But what really drives the budget is the language, the written words, and that's the part where the CULT. So the money's there. So for instance, in this year's budget, the money's there, but the language in the budget said for classroom teachers. So we're going to, we're gonna work with the executive budget office and ask them to clarify that language before they send it to the legislature. And if they don't, they say, no, we're gonna leave the language alone because a lot of times they don't want to fiddle with the language. They work on the numbers and they say that's up to the legislature to fiddle with the language. But then we'll go work with, it'll start in the House with Representative Garrett. We'll talk to his committee about changing the language we need to and then go to Senator Orr. So there'll be three opportunities to get the language. And I mean, our commitment is, we're gonna, at every level, we're gonna work to try to get that language so it doesn't say classroom teacher. So you've got my commitment on that. Can't promise you that I'll get it, get it, but.
Well, I think if they understand what, like an MBCT, I mean, in the name of it, it's teacher. And even, and I think we try to broadly define what that is with educators. But with a CULT, they got an extra level of expertise with reading, which to me, it almost, it amplifies their impact if they're in the central office determining the curriculum, determining the formative assessments, determining the P D. That they have so much power, more power, when they are in that sort of a role. And, and so you hate for them to be left out or, or almost punished for, for taking on that role. But anyway, those are just.
Well, and I think what you're specific, about your first question, what can we do? Y'all can all help. When you talk to your local legislators, like Ms. West, you've got one on that that's gonna be vice chair of that committee. You're, I think you're losing Senator Orr, but you, he's still, you still have his number. But just tell them, say, I know Dr. Mackey's gonna be making a suggestion, we change this language. I support that suggestion. I think if they hear it's more than just coming from me, that it's something that board members want, that will help a lot. I, I don't think it's gonna be really hard to get that language changed, but we'll, but anyway. We'll, we'll let you know how it's going as we get along.
Yes, please reach out. Like if you see that it's getting critical, that the discussions are going on, let us know so that we know, you know, to make a phone call. And then my last question, and this has to do with the workforce council when they presented. They, they mentioned, I think on their recommendations that, and Dr. Hall, you might can help me with this, that, that we need to, their suggestion, recommendation was that we need to make sure that we offer those career tech programs that are, it's the one that had the acronym with lots of Cs in it. A triple C, P. Okay. Can we get a report that shows us the current status of that? Like how many programs we have and, and what the alignment is? Like how many programs would fall on that list? I don't know which programs they are on that list, but could we see that?
Yes, we could come up, yeah, we could put that together. Nick and I are working together to get our programs aligned. Our funding is basically hinges on the programs being aligned. At some point, they have to be aligned, so we're heading in that direction.
And then could we see it by, by like districts or by L.E.A.?
Yeah. You said district, you mean your districts, our districts?
Well, I, I mean like my district, District Six, but I also would be interested in knowing my school districts. My L.E.A. because I would want to know if maybe if one of my, um, L.E.A.s only had one that was on the list, you know, that, that might be concerning. I would want them to have more options of those high-demand, high-income career pathways, right? So those students, um, can have the options of, of going into a high-demand career. But right now, I'm not sure which of my districts, I know many have Career Tech, but I don't know how many of their programs fall on those lists. So thank you very much.
And maybe that would benefit from knowing that those programs are heavy and robust, with say more than 10 career clusters because, just because it has a CTE, a family have like two or three career clusters, correct? And some of our small districts may not be offering 10 or more.
That's right.
The smaller system is going to be more limited than larger.
Sure. Well, and Jimmy, if you wanted to put like some of our students, many of our Career Tech students get classes at the community college. I mean, if that, if, but not, not every place has a community college that's close by, you know? So sometimes that's an option, sometimes it's not. Um, but just, just trying to get, I think first is awareness, to create awareness of finding out what do we currently have and then where are the gaps? And then we can come up with a plan to address them.
I've been talking to Dr. Vicky Olson, the review system this week actually about getting a very detailed report about where are our doing our government programs? What are the courses that are being offered? How many students are involved? What grade level? What schools they are serving? So we can see that. Because we have some situations where the two-year college may send a teacher to the technical center that's serving four, five, six, maybe seven high schools. But then other places, the kids that I know like are wearing the community college across the street from the high school, those kids go over there. So there's a lot of variations to how that looks. And we are in the process of getting a reassessment of exactly what we're offering, how we're offering, where we're offering, who has access to it and where the holes are so we can address the gaps in equity and access related to that. That, that's different from the first thing that you asked about, we should, we're working to get both of those things together.
Great, great. I just want to make sure our students have options, no matter where they are.
Ms. Ziegler?
I know, I did ask Jessica, I looked to see if she was here. Because of the new redistricting, and I would, I need to know, as Dr. Chestnut, which schools, I mean, we have one system, but we need to know exactly what schools are now in our area and the, and there's been superintendent changes, so can we? And we, I know the lovely book, I love my book. But I'm not waiting for my book, that can come later. But I do need a list because I now have Coffee County, so I need to go meet Coffee County people, but I don't know the schools. Tony and I are sharing Mobile County, so please.
They're in the process.
Okay.
So Jessica got the electronic file, just so you know, that we had some problems. Some of you know we've had some problems because 10 years ago when they redistricted in 2010, which none of us were, not one of us was here in 2010, I think.
I've been.
But they, um, they, well, I mean, it was here, yes, sir. The, they, I, I, we got to the bottom of it while so many schools, not many schools, but like a dozen schools were in the wrong district. And that's because the process was they asked the superintendents to tell them who their board member was. And the superintendents didn't have. And so that's what they, so.
I had two years in a row.
So what we did, so, so we, last year, after our issue in Limestone County, that's very confusing up there. We, um, we went, well, anyway, we changed our system. And we're now using the official G.I.S. system from the University of Alabama, not what superintendents think, if they think their board member is. So, I mean, most of them were right, but a few of them weren't. So what's happened, Jessica has gone, got the G.I.S. record, the electronic record, and she's given that to our I.T. section. And they're in the process of changing all the stuff and uploading it. And Dr. Sibley has it. And so we'll give you that list and it'll probably, it'll also soon, I don't know the exact day, but very soon, it'll go ahead and change over on the website. So when people look, they'll get the new districts, not the old ones. And, um, but you kind of, some of you are kind of representing two now because they're, they're not, I don't know when that act actually becomes official, but you become their new board member, but it's so many days after the governor signed it. But we're going ahead and moving forward with it as if though it's, it's in place now. It may have been immediate, sometimes they are.
Immediate, but I, you know.
But, um.
Mr. McCarty told me it was in my district and I had to tell him at lunch that he was not.
Yeah, and as you, oh, yeah, and he's, he's going to be over now in Dr. McCarty's district, right? Yeah, hey, Benoit County. There were, so there were some shifts, um, and we've got those. The hard ones, there are only three counties now that are split. That's Mobile and Jefferson and Montgomery. And so those are the ones that are hard.
I don't have all of them, I don't think.
Hey, Talladega, I'm sorry, Talladega is split down around Silicaga. You're right. But I think those are the home, not as many splits as we used to have. But we will, anyway, that's, that's coming and.
Thank you.
Well, I asked, actually, uh, you're not the only one that's asked about that, but when I asked Jessica, she said, Ms. Ziegler's already asked that question and I've already gone and gotten the file, so.
And I was just going to ask her, since she wasn't there, I thought I'd put out the official record.
Well, you helped her out because you got her, before I could ask the question, you already, she'd already done it because you'd given her that. So, so that's coming, um, let's see, oh, anyway.
Okay, any more board member questions? Anyone else?
Just one comment.
Tracy, you had asked several months ago about in-service centers.
And, um, I was digging, you know, looking for something else and how it is when you're looking for one thing, you find something else. And so I found a hard copy, could not find electronic copy anywhere. Um, but this is just, I mean, it's old, so it's nothing that's relevant anymore. It's back from, what, 2015? But it was a report done on the in-service centers and I think you had asked, um, like which schools are taking advantage of the P.D. that's offered at in-service centers? And so it's just to show, and I know Dr. Davis is working with in-service centers. It's just an example of a report that, um, that shows that kind of information. And I think they still compile that information. So, um, so, you know, I'm sure we get, but I just wanted you to see. And then I didn't want to give it just to you and then Tanya say, what are you giving her? So I just thought, you know.
Thank you so much, we all can use that.
Well, like I say, just use it or toss it in the trash, but I just didn't want to give it to one and not to everybody.
Uh, Dr. Mackey, the redistricting's immediately after the governor signs. So we are now officially redistricting.
Representing your new scope.
Oh, yeah.
So, yes, if we can get the superintendent. Call somebody, call Dr. McCarty.
No, I didn't, I said, I don't, I didn't say it that way.
He said it nicely, I was, Carol was, so you know.
He did.
Okay. Work session dates.
Number three.
Um, so, and meeting dates. So if you look at item three.
This is yours.
Every, every December, you have to adopt a calendar for the upcoming year. We by default set all the meetings in the Board of Presidents building, but they have been for years, you know, sometimes, we used to try to go outside, but that's, y'all know there's always issues with that. So, but look at the dates, so they're, they're all the second Thursday of the month except for July, which is the second Tuesday. Um, the, um, we went ahead, as we discussed last month, and put the retreat dates in there. One of the reasons we call it, now we put TBD, but we have to, so what Nora will do after December, when you adopt this, she will go ahead and go on to the, this public notice side and, and, uh, queue in all of our meetings for next year so that the, the notice is done, you know, for the whole year. If we have to make a change, we can, but they're, they're already, she goes ahead and does that. So we'll go ahead and put in those retreat dates. They can change, there's nothing on here that cannot change, but we've got to put notice out. So think about, those are the only two that are unusual, but those are the days we talked about, so that would, um, if I could, you know, the January one will be a tough one, but that's a Wednesday. We talked about doing that on the last Wednesday of the month because we could invite legislators then. They would be in town and that's a committee date for them, so they should not be in session and possibly have, just mostly spend that retreat day doing joint meetings with policy and funding committees in the legislature. That's, going back to August, we talked about that. So that's kind of what we're thinking. And then, uh, because no, Representative Garrett was the only one who was able to join us that day, but they would all be in town on this day. And then the August one mirrors what we did this past August. Um, again, it's a Wednesday, the last Wednesday in August.
Okay.
So just look at those between now and next month, if you will. Item four, this is, um, a new administrative coach, Susan Crowder, from our legal office is here, that she drafted this and she can help answer questions. But, so Susan, correct if I'm wrong, but essentially what we're doing, we're moving to DocuSign, which is speeding things up for us. So like now, when we do an M.O.A. with a school district for $3,000, we have to send them a hard copy, their superintendent, CFO have to sign it, mail it back to us with original signatures. And then it goes through like four signatures here before it comes to me and I'm the last signature. So about eight people have to sign it, all, a fiscal piece of paper that has to make at least three trips through the mail. So we're trying to move everything to DocuSign, but we have, we need code permission basically to use, to transfer electronic documents and use DocuSign. Is that?
That's correct, isn't that shot yet?
So any questions, please direct them to Ms. Crowder and she can help.
It's a very good idea. I sign everything DocuSign will do. I know you're real first.
If you don't know, Susan, one of our attorneys, she, you know, she's not here at board meets normally, does a great job. She published an article, um, in the Alabama School Board Journal, uh, a couple of months ago, it was a great article, you might have seen it, if you get the journal, about, um, how the protections we needed to and did put in place to protect children when so many kids went online from predators and how many more opportunities there were. So she, she is kind of our specialist on protecting children from predators too. She helped, she was our, um, go-to person who worked with Jacksonville State two years ago to develop all that online training that we push out on to teachers, to new teachers about how to, not just at Jacksonville, they just got, they did the grant. But we push out videos on what how to and not to interact with children, which, what signs you should, should cause you to, to kind of raise your eyebrows and do a report. And so anyway, Susan's our person who, she is our specialist in that just kind of was willing to take that on. And since she's here, I wanted y'all to know, put a name with a face, does a great job for us. Uh, so that's five, four. Five is J.S.U., we talked about that. So the double A is that six-year degree elementary ed. They're, they're one of the few colleges that offers that. The next five are our National Blue Ribbon Schools. And I know Ms. Ziegler's already gone down to visit one.
Yesterday.
Yesterday at Orange Beach, and we'll try to get down there in a couple of weeks. Try this year to visit all of them again. Last year was hard because of the pandemic and so many, they were closed many days. But they should, they're planning to all be here in December to get their resolutions from you. They've already been to Washington and gotten their big blue ribbon banners, so. And they come from Bruton, Orange Beach, uh, MacMillan here in Montgomery, uh, there's one in Homewood, Hawke's Head, uh, Shelby County is, uh, Mount Laurel. And that might be all, is that five of us?
Can you only be a blue ribbon once?
Oh, no.
No, you can do, okay.
You can, yes, but.
But there's years.
Yeah, many years in between.
You can't do it year after year, but there is, and I think it changed, at one time it was seven years, but I think they dropped it back to five.
Okay.
George, George Hall, I know it's been twice.
Phillips down in Mobile, Phillips Preparatory has been it twice.
Just going to lie and say, where was I in Benetton County two weeks ago? Now, if that's your district, um.
Were you at John Jones?
John Jones, John Jones has been twice. I think it now, actually, they've gone the other way. And it's like 15 years in between.
Well, that's crazy.
Oh, there's a, it's a.
I've got to call it.
I'll tell Secretary Cardona if I get a chance to tell him that. They went the other way with it, so.
Yeah, we, we secretary of administration.
By the time you get what you've done, that was so good.
We'll, I'll come to Homewood and we're going to try to set up all of those, probably, probably Orange Beach in December and the rest of them will be after the first of the year sometime. We'll do that. We might get MacMillan, Dr. Chestnut soon, we've got to figure that one out. But, um, they're, they're all back, they were all in Washington last week, so.
Fourth and fifth.
Fourth and fifth. Um, computer science education week, obviously we've talked a lot about computer science today and that continues to push out. And then, um, this is the, so now item 12, back to this. This is the, we talked about this two months ago in Mordeau. And this is a resolution, the board wants us to do something affirming that local school districts should have the right essentially to make decisions about whether students wear masks. Because there was at that time talk in the legislature about it being part of the special session to take that right away from local boards. But now it's not a hot topic right now. So think about if you want us to pass, I mean, I'm not saying not to, but at that time, you know, some topics go up and down. So do you want to vote on this in December or do you want to wait and see if it becomes?
Reynolds, yes.
Yes, I think the governor is already speaking some of these issues. And the legislative was, and what has not been addressed is the concept of required immunization, which may be a national issue. So perhaps we might want to wait and see if some other things bubble up or if this remains significant. Because this deals with masking. And as we, all of us know who pay attention to the fact that now age, down to age five are eligible at immunization and we do not know what input that has. We do know that we want to retain local control about masking, but I think we might want to just, from my perspective, hold on. It's not an imminent problem for me.
Dr. Chestnut, Ms. West, anything you want to?
Well, I have mixed feelings about that. You know, um, I can see what Dr. Reynolds is saying, however, do we wait until the problem comes back and then want to make a decision? Can we be proactive rather than reactive?
I mean, we've got it ready to go.
I think originally when we discussed it, it was because we said something needed to be done and the school districts needed to know that we supported them. I think that's why the issue had come up at that time.
But do we not feel that they need to know?
It has not changed.
We still support their.
Right, and I think we'll let them know we're supporting their efforts because a lot of them, we're getting a lot of heat by mandating masking off.
I don't have a problem, I just expressed an opinion.
No, that's, that's good.
We're good.
That's why we're talking, that's why we have work sessions.
You all, I mean.
We might.
I'm happy with the pleasure of the board. Um, I see it as local control and important, but you're right, I also see the other side that it is not a hot topic right now. So I'm, I'm listening and learning from all of y'all.
We might want to include the word immunization in there too, because we said in others, but right, it may be within the next 30 to 90 days, immunization of children may bubble up to be as significant as masking.
Only thing I would, on that, Dr. Reynolds, I would caution is, so we don't, of course, masking, way to place your desk, is a school thing. Immunization is a public health issue. Now, Dr. Harrison and I have had multiple conversations. Now, he's getting to take off this week, I'm not going to bother him until Monday, but we're going to do, just so you know, in immunization, we're going to do a joint letter that makes it clear that we have no intention to require immunization for children, but that we encourage everybody to, you know, parents to talk to their pediatrician, uh, which is essentially is. which is essentially the same message we've had. But there are a lot of folks now that the immunizations, you know, the younger they get, the more people get concerned, always with children. So public health has already put something out that said that, a press release, but. So that's going to be our guidance. It's your decision if you want to offer a clinic, but state law now has changed to say that parents have to sign off on children to get the COVID vaccine. It does not apply to other vaccines, the COVID vaccine. That was all, that didn't actually change anything, because public health had already established that rule that parents, that children couldn't get a COVID vaccine without parental notification. And our schools were already practicing that. So it really did not change anything for us, but now it's in the law. So we'll make that clear, but it would, there are no, you know, there are no federally required vaccines, even like, even like, you know, mumps and measles. There, it's state health departments that regulate that, and our state health department has made it very clear, and I support them in our conversations, that they don't plan to make any changes to the required childhood vaccinations right now. So I do understand, Dr. Reynolds, I think that's a concern. We keep hearing that. People are afraid they will. Well, now, people are afraid we will. But we don't require you to take the polio vaccine. That's a public health requirement. And they said they don't intend to add COVID to the required list of vaccines. So just like the flu shots, Doc.
I'm good with this resolution. I'm just.
Yes, sir, I know.
Potential concerns.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think as leaders, we should be proactive. And it's good for our school districts to know that we're supporting them.
Well, if this is in place, and we have some sort of spike after the first of the year when folks have gone home or been traveling out of state and back in state, we've sort of gone ahead and taken care of it. Well, we've already practiced by going to every stadium full of 100,000.
I was about to say, even after Thanksgiving.
I think our vaccine is working.
It is.
Okay, I'm going to leave it on here, unless I hear calls, y'all call me and tell me otherwise. Okay, the last one is a recognition for Selma. Selma Sealed Schools got a special recognition. They were the only school in the system in the state. I think there were two award winners in Alabama, but one was a hospital, I think. They're on school, school system that won this Apex, OutPex Award. And so we're going to recognize them, and that brings us to the end of the chat.
Okay. Nick Moore was going to give us another thing on Dr. Mack's evaluation. Thank you.
I'm putting your jacket on.
Right.
Dress up for that. That's a put your jacket on. That's a put your jacket on.
I'm going to email these to everybody, because the writing is very small. I want it to be on one page, so we weren't looking across two pages. But I recognize you might have to have a magnifying glass to see this. Y'all made state discussion, or we may leave, I don't care.
I did talk to you, some problems with our passing back of information.
We got everybody's evaluation back, so thank you for sharing those with us, getting those in. John Gilchrist, who has been with Governor Ivey's office for over a year now, is, I don't know if everybody here has met him, but he works with us on education, has helped me particularly on the comments and tabulating the scores. So all the comments that folks submitted are included in the attachment. Because some of the results were on photos and things like that, if we have misinterpreted you, or if there's anything on there that is not accurate, please let us know, and we will correct that. We didn't see anything on there that was too hard to interpret, anything like that. But we certainly want to make sure that it's accurate. The, each category, so we had five categories, as you know, on the new evaluation instrument. This is the first instance in which this new instrument has been used. And on each of the categories, you will see that the, the instrument said anything that was a 2.0 or below would be seen as unsatisfactory. There's nothing that's even close to unsatisfactory. Everything is nearly a 4.0 or above on there. At the very bottom, you'll see the composite score is a 4.082899, or really just a 4.0. So about 4.0 out of 5. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, but other than that, just want to thank you for sending these in. And.
I think it's a 4.1. Didn't we learn how to round up in that?
Yeah.
I'm just, you know, just, I'm just teasing you. I'm just teasing.
That's why Dr. McCarty is a stand person.
That's right.
So that brings me, will, it will be an item, it's not on the, I don't know, we, we don't think it's an agenda item on the work session, but it'll be an item that you vote on to, in December. What you vote is basically to.
Accept.
Accept it, you accept it. Formalize it, ratify it. Thank you, Dr. Reynolds, that's the word I was looking for. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you, John. Glad to have to meet, John.
Yes, yes. All right, if there's nothing else, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Be safe going home.
And it's not even 5 o'clock? Oh, I never.
I forgot, I had something on my list, I feel now it's the end of the day, but on my list to recognize Dr. Reynolds upstairs as our veteran, and then we were. Time to tell him, we really do appreciate his service in Vietnam. And I was, Monday night in Birmingham with some Medal of Honor, three Medal of Honor winners that are living with us, and several Vietnam vets. And, you know, it's just a.
Hey, surviving Vietnam and surviving the state borders is quite an accomplishment.
Appreciate it, Doc.
Very short.
Well.